Okay, thank you. Welcome. I just wish to call to order this regular meeting of council on April 28 at 3:30 PM. Council would like to acknowledge Uqulutthot First Nation on whose traditional territories the District of Uqulut operates. Notice of video recording. Audience members and delegates are advised that this proceeding is being video recorded and broadcast on YouTube. Delegates and meeting participants are also advised that this meeting is being conducted via Zoom, which may be stored, may store data on foreign servers. We do have an addition to the agenda. Does everybody have it?
Yes.
Yes.
Perfect, thank you. So looking for approval of the agenda with these two late items?
So moved.
Day moved by Counselor Kemp, second by Counselor Cole. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carrie, thank you. Looking for the adoption of the minutes from April 14?
So moved. Second.
Perfect. Any errors or omissions? Looking at the two on the right? Nothing? Okay, none seen or heard? So looking, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed Carrie, thank you for that. Mayor's announcements. I don't have anything other than just to thank the community again for, for being civil and working through this, this situation that we find our community in. So thank you. Community input, anything come in via email? None coming in? Thank you. And is there a delegation? Has he signed in? Okay, perfect. So we do have a delegation of Mike Ferson with the Ministry of Transportation and Infrastructure regarding Kennedy Hill Safety Improvements. Welcome, Mike, if you're there.
Good afternoon. Thanks for having us.
We'll just turn it over to you. We just don't see your lovely face yet.
Hello?
Just one second there, Mike.
Sure.
We see them at home.
There he is, okay. You always, you know, you look better in person, Mike. I'm just saying.
Oh, thanks. The computer adds 10 pounds, I've heard.
Anyways, welcome and thanks for making some time for us today.
Thank you. Are we ready to go?
Yeah, it's all on you. Yeah, go ahead.
All right, well, thanks for having us again. Today, today we're providing an update on the Kennedy Hill project. This is initially the meeting that we intended, the update we'd intended to provide back in March, prior to all these, this COVID stuff. So what you're, what you'll hear today is sort of where we were at prior to, prior to all the COVID stuff. And then we'll also speak a bit to that and next steps. And, and so, yeah, with that, I guess I won't, I won't drag it out. I'll leave it, pass it to Darren, our project manager, who can walk us through our PowerPoint here. And at the end, we also have a video too. We weren't able to send it. It's just because of the size of it. So if you'd allow us to share our screen, we could, we could show that to you as well.
Perfect.
So what do you think?
I'm going here. I'll alt to say next slide. So whoever's controlling it on your end will hear me say that. But yeah, just to expand upon what Mike was saying, the, we've intended to present this in March. And we had a subsequent public news release went out, I believe, either very end of March, I think it was, describing kind of the, the schedule challenges that we've had on the project and kind of summarizing the incidences from this January and kind of taking stock of where the project is at. So a little bit delayed presentation to the council here. But yeah, so going to the next slide here, I can kind of give a summary of the project in high level here. So we're focusing, as everyone likely aware, a 1.5 kilometer section of the highway with a primary intent to widen it, align it better, to add in proper lane widths, proper PH shoulder width, add in roadside bear protection on the lake side and provide for rock catchment as well as even just basic drainage ditch that was not existent on the hill to begin with. Looking at removing the overhang rock in association with doing rock stabilization, including rock meshing and opening on the council. The project scope also includes a new rest area being constructed utilizing the surplus or otherwise be surplus rock excavation coming out of the rock cuts. The project budget is currently 38.1 million and it remains that. That's still the budget that it was at Tender Award and Leiderson, which occurred in March 2018 and their contract was worth $29 million. Let's go to the next slide. So this project is, has definitely a very challenging project. I've spoken to my counterparts throughout the province and we've spitballed about some of the complex challenges we worked on, on a number of provincial highways, but we've kind of somewhat agreed that this is probably by far the most challenging in a single location. We've got extensively high rock cuts, which we've done before in other projects. But when you add that in adjacent to the hydro transmission lines, which as we all know are the sole power feed to the West Coast. So a very important trunk line there, as well as the proximity of Candy Lake and the environmental habitat that contains. So it's definitely literally a rock and a hard place type project to widen. So the bulk effort of doing this blasting is very focused on mitigating impacts to those features. So mitigating impacts to not only the highway below, but also the hydro lines and the lake itself. So there's a lot of extensive work that goes into the blasting operation, which is more onerous than we otherwise undertake on most highway widening projects. So as an example, and I'll speak more to the blasting kind of conditions later, but as an example, when the drillers drill the holes on this hill, they actually backfill each and every drill hole with the aggregate. So basically crushed sand and gravel. And that's blasting practice, the practice to, to mitigate the compressive gases from creating fly rock that otherwise has the risk of impacting hydro lines in this area. So it's, it's definitely a very onerous process to go through, but it's, it's done for the safety of not only, you know, keeping the highway open as much as we possibly can, but also mitigating any impacts to hydro. So we go to the next slide here. Some of the other challenges that we have are just, you know, generally access related. So it's, it's very high cuts, relatively narrow for the volume of rock that we're taking out. And pretty much the top of almost every cut to start with, required hand blasting, drilling, blasting. So it's literally someone hanging off a rope with a handheld drill in their hand, drilling blast holes. So that's ongoing. There's still a few small areas of the project that require hand drilling. But generally that hand drilling scope is mostly completed. But in addition to hand drilling, we have the scaling operations which are ongoing and continue, will continue until these bluffs are, are down to highway grade. We have to continue to stabilize and make sure that the, the rock after the blasts have gone off is stable and there's no risk of imminent rockfall. Yeah, these yellow circles on this slide are of the, of the actual crew standing there. So you can get an indication of scale there. There's two crew members in the middle, one and one crew member in each of the side circles there. They go to the next slide. Another challenge we have here is the, the kind of uneven and random nature of the, of the blocks or the, you know, blocks of, I guess the best word is that, large boulders that are attached essentially and sitting on the side of the mountain slope. And where those yellow circles are on the right, they show areas of slip plane where bolts and, oh, sorry, not bolts, where blocks used to reside. And as the cut is coming down, you know, behind or above them, they have the, the potential to dislodge. So as we progress these cut slopes down, it's a planned process to control when those get released. We have had a few incidents where those were released inadvertently or unexpectedly, I guess the word is that they weren't envisioned to be dislodged by a given blast. But inevitably did come down and that required more time and equipment to remove that debris from the highway. But as the, the rock out there is very fragmented and very random, so these blocks, not all of them are evident to the blasters, especially looking over the sides, it's hard to gain access and visually inspect all of them. And others are also have historical, you know, 50-year-old rock bolts in them. So we have to make sure that the charges are such a way that they can dislodge that rock bolt, let the block come down. We've had again another incident, just even, I think it was about a three or four weeks ago, where a pole held on to the rock and we had to go up there and dislodge it after a planned opening that resulted in longer delays. We go to the next slide. Some other challenges we've, we've had is, on the left there is a image of where the, the slope was failed in the January incident, which had a prolonged highway closure and the requirement to deploy a temporary bridge structure. We were able to come in and hopefully remove that structure and do the, call it semi-permanent slope repair. I say semi-permanent in the sense that it's a slope repair to keep traffic going through construction. But the ultimate highway alignment will actually be founded solely on bedrock in that area as that, as that cut behind comes down, the highway will shift over into that rock excavation zone. And on the right-hand side, we also have sections of the highway that are made up of what we call cordory road, which is a logging, kind of logging road construction technique, which Highway 4 historically originated as a logging road. So the, the road builders back in the early 50s there in that era had buried the old large cedar and fir trees to support the road fill. And so as we're excavating down to install our new embankment, we're having to remove those kind of rotting timber materials. So that creates other challenges with the ability of removing those, those blocks while keeping the existing highway open for job. Go to the next slide. So I can kind of give you a rundown of the magnitude of the earthworks that we're undertaking out there. So we've been in construction since May of 2018, so just shy of two years now. It'll be two years in a few days, actually. So the, my cash flow, we're approximately 60% complete. I do say cash flow because the, the actual level of rock excavation is well more than that. We just have other remaining work to do on the project that obviously do have come with the, with the cost, especially asphalt and finishing touches there. Blasting does continue to be the, the current activity on site. There's generally a blast almost any given day. And it's a 24-hour operation. There's always staff there. There's single and alternating. So even if there's no production going on at a given hour of a day, there are flaggers present, crew present to maintain the access and safety of the site. To date, we've had over 120,000 cubic meters of blast rock taken down. It's equivalent to 30,000 large, you know, mining trucks or rock buggies, the yellow dump trucks worth of hauling on site. And in addition to that rock excavation, we've also had over 35,000 cubic meters of, of the soil. So general kind of gravels and topsol that has been moved around the site. So that's, those are quantities to date. We still have 46,000 cubic meters of blast rock to go. That blast rock to go is primarily in the lower bluff areas. So it's accessible by machine drilling equipment. Large volume of that 120,000 cubic meters that have been done to date, that was actually achieved via hand drilling. So it's a very slow and methodical process to G-Rat. If we go to the next slide. So further kind of stats on the, on the blast. And we've had over 430 blasts to date. By quantity, that is equivalent to on average, you know, in the order of about 300 cubic meters per blast. To kind of put that in comparison, a typical highway project like Malat projects we've done over the recent years, single blasts can range up to 1,000 to 2,000 cubic meters. So this, this individual blasts on this site are actually quite small relative to our highway, our typical highway procedures. And again, that's trying to reduce the amount of rock that comes on the highway to reestablish openings, as well as mitigate impacts to hydro and then obviously the environment and the lakeshore there. Each blast itself takes 30 to 40 drill holes to actually, to get the charges to where they need to be. So each individual blast can have over 150 meters of drilled depth of hole. So it is very time consuming to, to plan and propagate each blast. There's nine kilometers of hand drilling done by, for those blasts and over 54 kilometers of machine drilling done on those blasts to date. Over 100,000 cubic meters of explosives have been used in all those charges. And that's only, you know, by, by volume, just over around three quarters of the work completed and brought back. Had in the top image there on the right, there's a slope stability wall that's being, has been essentially installed. And it's primarily a row of steel pipe piles that have been drilled into the ground to support that, that section of the highway. In that wall itself, there's been over 800 meters of piles installed in that area. And we have over one kilometer of rock bolts partially, partially installed, but still to be completed, stabilizing the rock face that we're dropping and taking down here. So anywhere our geotext see blocking kind of left behind on the finished face, we, we put in numerous rock bolts all over the rock face to stabilize those. So it'd be far in excess of what was there to begin with. Go to the next slide. So. Yeah, if you're able to advance one more, go back. Yeah, that slide. So there's a, unique changes happened while we were actively building this project. So we are in working with the contractor and trying to establish an efficient way of achieving our, our goals of the project, which is alignment shifts and widening the highway. The contractor was able to come to us with a proposal to adjust and reduce the rock excavations through the, the major rock cuts and look at achieving the width of the highway by introducing four canyon lever bridge structures. We'll show a video in a second that kind of illustrates those locations. But on the top right, you can see where the dark black areas on the pavement there, there's short spans being proposed on some key locations. And what this does is allow us to slightly shift the highway center line so we could utilize four of the, I'll say the existing highway width. And it allows for a reduction over 130,000 cubic meters of rock coming out of these bluffs. In order to compensate for that reduction of, of rock that otherwise would have gone into the, the original rest area footprint and highway alignment footprint, we've, we've made an adjustment to the highway alignment right at the top of the hill. And anyone who's driven through recently would have realized there's, there's a, referred to as a through cut or a bit of a canyon introduced at the top of the hill. Traffic is now, since last week, actually now driving in that new alignment area. And that, that shift in alignment was in order to not require over three hectares of forest clearing. That hectares of forest clearing is kind of under the word rest in the label of new rest area. So that was another benefit of this, this proposal. And then the other spinoff is that with the reduction in fillout and adjustment to the rest area, we're now able to locate the physical rest area on the lake side of the highway. So that's where the, the bulk embankment now remains on the highway for, or sorry, on the construction site for all the remaining blast rock to be hauled and then placed in. So that'll allow for, you know, an improved view and it mitigates the concerns that were raised at the initial presentations of this project before construction where some stakeholders had raised concern about a rest area being on the mountainside and tourists specifically wanting to maybe walk across the highway to get a, a better unobstructed view of, of something. So with the rest area now being on the lakeside, we're able to, to have that issue mitigated. So if we're able to, before we kind of jump to the next slide, we have the video we can introduce now if it, if it's possible. On, on your end, if you're able to let us show our desktop, we can play the, the video on our end here.
We're just sorting that out right now, just. So you're good to go there, Mike.
Can you see that now?
There we go. Yep. Thank you.
Drone imagery from a few weeks ago. And so right where the bulldozer is already, there is the new alignment. And actually, as of last week, that alignment's been fully opened, done or gravel grade. And there's the canyon that I was referring to earlier. So traffic is now located in that. And that is the new highway alignment there. On the right-hand side here is the bulk fill and we'll, the camera angle will change in a second here. But on that right is the bulk fill where the new rest area footprint will go. So the camera will rotate around here. We'd merge two images together. So that'll be the footprint of the new rest area, kind of parking area viewpoint. And as we head further down the hill, just beyond the white truck there and the, the heart of that curve, that's where the slope stability wall is. We're saying around here about over 800 meters of steel pipe pile installed. So that, that wall is located through that 100-meter length there of the highway. And as we get into this lower half section of the highway, this is where the, the bulk of the rock excavation is occurring. These are the large bluffs that are coming down. And this is the same zone where we're introducing the four canyon lever structures. So they're going to be located in areas where we've got bedrock foundation that the, the bridges are founded on both the uphill and downhill side of the bridge structure, but also along, well, effectively, I'll say underneath the future center line of the highway. So it's a unique structure where it's not spanning an open void like our typical bridges would, but it actually has an apartment on three sides. It has a foundation on that. Like I said, there's four of them proposed and they will allow for that rock excavation to be reduced in that order of 130,000 cubic meters then. So if we go back to the, the PowerPoint, it was project milestone slide, if that's able to pull back up. Yeah, so the next slide after this one. So looking forward to the months ahead here, we're actively focused on these last two remaining bluffs coming down. And the goal is to have them down to highway grade for this July, or by July. So that when we hopefully would reintroduce back to our tourist season, right, for the, the economy out there. But obviously this is subject to, to, I'll say, the impacts of COVID. But nonetheless, our, our project is focusing on getting those bluffs down as soon as possible. And right now we are on schedule to be down for the peak of summer traffic that otherwise would hit the West Coast. The, once the blasting is down to that level or elevation, the road closures and the length of closures can drastically reduce. Because as the blasting that still has to happen beyond that, it's happening below the existing highway grade. So it doesn't require the scaling and the prolonged closures to stabilize up slopes post blasting. So it, it will be much like we've accomplished or currently are doing on Malat, previously accomplished on the Malat corridor, where closures can be reduced down to, you know, the 20, 30-minute windows and, and get traffic moving quite quickly after each individual blast. So that'll be a great improvement for this coming summer. And the canyon lever bridges will be starting shortly. They're just getting their access footprints, a couple of the apartments in order. And the, the bridge works themselves won't really be too impactful to traffic because they're generally located over the, I'll say is a, is an existing void or existing lakeside of the highway. So it, the traffic is able to shift over to the new, essentially into the rock cut that is there at that time. So we've also have the, the bulk paving going to be happening in the fall. But there, there is a plan to actually have some of the alignment to the north then paved in the next month or so here. If we go to the next slide. So the original completion date says, as everyone was aware, was the summer of 2020. So the, by kind of months, that was kind of envisioned by or in September at the end of the summer here. With the delays that we've had with environmental challenges, as well as the incident in January, and then most recently with some challenges with the, with the staff resources we've had with the, with the ongoing pandemic. We're looking at right now having a final paving late this fall and total completion this coming winter. That's still a bit of a moving target where currently we are impacted with COVID, with the crew resources being limited. There isn't a full contingent of staff that they have available currently. So as everyone is aware, we're, we're currently doing, focusing on daytime operations right now with, with the four-hour daytime closures for the, a couple of weeks. So that, that ultimate completion is still, I'll say, subject to change. But it's, it's one that contractor, once they get to the summer, will have drastically reduce the, the most impactful aspect of the project with it, which is the, the traffic interruptions. Those are, it's still the goal to, to improve those interruptions come this summer. Yeah, the next slide is just if any questions open to everyone.
Well, thank you for that presentation. We totally appreciate that. And I imagine that some of my counselors will have some questions. Spy hands. Oh, I see Counselor Kemp's. Go ahead. You're muted there, Lara.
You guys, I appreciate it. Is there a way to get those slides and everything on the ML site? So there's communication regarding the timelines and what's been happening?
Yeah, so the, you're referring to like the PowerPoint slide that we, that was presented? Yeah, so with, obviously with this meeting, as well as we've had the opportunity to present to, to, you know, council, as well as that they are publicly available via these, these meetings, they are available to go on your agenda and, or your minutes. And it's in the mail that way. We could look at providing details of this on ML Anderson's Facebook page. I know that a lot of the locals rely on a lot of the information from that source. So that is something we can reach out, see what we can put on there for, for the local.
Okay, thanks. And another question, as we're all aware, that our economy isn't the strongest right now, but there are still some sectors that are working, hence the fish plants and couriers and so forth. With this nine-to-eleven closure, and I have reached out to the businesses and they, they want to work with the, we understand the challenges and we all want to work together, but they find that an afternoon closure is more beneficial? Is there thoughts of that at all? And has there been communication with that?
We've had a couple contacts with the, with the fish plants. And so it is something we'd be willing to look into. The, one of the challenges we have is balancing all the stakeholders out there. So as you're aware, it's, there's, there's the fish plants is absolutely an economic driver and we want to be working with them. But we also have to balance that with the other stakeholders. So if we're, I know one of the concepts was shifting the closure from noon until 4:00 PM, I believe, was the, was one of the specific requests from one of the plants. It's something we could send out and see what other stakeholders have in mind for that. But that's a challenge of, of introducing that closure because that may not be acceptable for some of the commercial good deliveries.
So I've, so I've reached out and I'd wear a couple of hats. I'm also the ED for the chamber. So I've talked to the couriers and talked to all the fish plants for you. And, and they're all on board with an afternoon closure. They just, the more communication, the better. It's just really difficult now with this morning closure. They're really finding it hard for overtime and keeping the fish fresh and so forth, that it would be very helpful to make that change.
Well, that's something we can definitely look, look into doing this and trying to get out information this week and see how soon we can look at shifting the schedules.
Yeah. And how much, like how can we communicate it better? Because there's a lot of, as all they want is that touch point to be able for Ministry of Transportation to reach out to some of these sectors and just to be able to communicate with them. And we're finding that there's really no communication right now?
I guess reaching out, we've reached out individually to certain companies. But I guess that it'd be, if yourself, if you were saying the indicated with some of these contacts, if you have that list, we could either, if you're willing to share some of the contacts directly that you've worked with, we can try to use that same kind of distribution to inform them in ahead of time. We're more than happy to send it out to really any stakeholder. But right now, it's, it's kind of a couple, say representative samples we've reached out to. Like we'll reach out to the co-op for some of their, their, their deliveries for the, for the groceries. But also the, the other main kind of notice that goes out was that ML Anderson sends out a distribution email to the closures. And they have a, is a distribution list that has like over 200 email addresses on it of local businesses and then local companies all throughout the.
No, I haven't seen that. I haven't seen that at all. And none of our stakeholders have mentioned that at all.
Okay, we'll review what ML Anderson has on that distribution email. I know that's gone out. We've been, that's been sent out. It's been well over a year now. I think it's been, it's probably been over the bulk of the, the project duration that that notice goes out every couple of weeks.
Oh, it's probably just the notice of the, the schedule of the closures. Is that correct? We all get.
That's what I'm referring to, sorry.
Oh, yeah, that's fine. It's just the communication about what works best for our communities. There's none of that.
Okay, no, we can look at improving and seeing what we can get for this feedback at least is coming, especially while we're doing these. In reality, we're unplanned kind of four-hour closures in the middle of the day without COVID, the current situation we're dealing with. We'd otherwise be pushing for the evening and nighttime closures that we had been facilitating over the last year.
Anything else? Go ahead, Lara. Counselor Kemp's.
No, go ahead.
No, no, I just wanted to know if you had another question.
No, I don't think so.
Counselor Hor?
I do have a couple of things. One was originally.
I do have a couple of things. One was originally, you said that when you were starting this whole thing and you had meetings with the commercial drivers and the stakeholders in town, that the closures would be overnight. And of course, currently now they're during the day and it is causing huge disruption as councillor Kemp's mentioned for a lot of people. But the other thing is that your, the closure updates that come around are inaccurate. They say that it is single lane alternating traffic, for instance, from four to five or from seven to nine, but it's not. I, I had no, my, my partner is a commercial driver and it is top of the hour. It's not single lane alternating. Originally, there was also the promise that no one would wait more than half an hour at the closure. And of course, that is significantly changed now. And I understand the changes that have to take place because of COVID. That is different. I know having a single group on site as opposed to having your 24 hour multiple crews is different. But if you post single lane alternating traffic, it would be nice if it was single lane alternating traffic. And that your closures were actually on, your openings were on time. You can sit there from four o'clock. He often sits there. He gets there at 4am to go through and he doesn't get through until 5:20 or 5:30. That is a significant difference when you're doing pickups on the other side and you're trying to get back to this side to catch that one o'clock opening. Otherwise you're sitting again because it's a top of the hour allow through. So just would be really nice if what you said, where the closures and the openings were actually accurate in some way, shape or form.
I'll reach out to our field staff to see that they can closely monitor that. I know that with the top of the hour closure or opening rather, the, it opens in one direction. So typically with the queues there, it'll take usually 10, 15 minutes at least to clear the other side. So it's, it's kind of a staggered top of the hour field to flush traffic. So, and when they do say a single and alternating traffic, it's separate to the top of the hour openings. It is the intent that they are constantly flushing traffic. So that'll, I'll reach out to our field staff.
Yeah, because they definitely are not constantly flushing when they're saying that it should be. So he's sat there, there's no traffic coming through and he's sat there for well over an hour and a half waiting to get through.
Anything else for you councillor Hor?
No.
Okay, thanks for that. Any other? Oh, councillor Cole?
Hi there. Just want to make sure it's on your radar that it's not so much for wearing my other hat as a BC ambulance service. It's not so much Uclut, but as far as the Tofino ambulance service goes and their transfers from the hospital to other hospital destinations. Typically, when there was going to be nighttime closures, you weren't taking away those daytime hours for, because we try really hard not to do ever since 2010 and the incident into the lake. Doing nighttime transfers is something that's highly avoided unless it is super urgent. So it, it does take a chunk of the time where transfer availability is kind of implicated. And that doesn't, that doesn't make a difference about changing it for business hours during the day. It's just that day to night shift that, that happened. That is certainly one of the effects.
Yeah, and with that, we have a protocol as we did during the nighttime for getting the ambulance through if needed. And that's still applied during the day. If there's a, I, I'll say a heads up or a known patient transfer that's needed in a day, let's say it's known a few hours ahead of time. I know emergent ones, there's a protocol still applies. We'll get them through as fast as we can. But if there is a planned one that can be planned a few hours ahead, they can still follow that same protocol, reach out to the site and we can postpone a closure and get, making sure the BC ambulance can get through.
Any other questions from the group? Councillor McEwan, do you have anything? No, okay. Yeah, thanks. And I think you've, you've heard from all of us there. It's just, just to get the communication. And I would advise, you know, I would hope that you might be able to just reach out to the local Chamber of Commerce and they may be able to just be able to give you some feedback without you having to talk to 50 different parties. I don't really have any questions. I think the, the rest of the councillor have asked them, but I do have some non Kennedy like questions. Am I allowed to ask those, Mike?
Yeah, of course. We have stuff here as well.
Okay, perfect. I'm wondering if there's, you know, with Kennedy Hill, do you have some plans on the radar? You, you did, you did a bit of a patchwork last summer. And I'm wondering if you're, if that's, if you're going to have a bit of a budget to do anything this summer.
Also, we're, we did look at that. We thought about doing some patching out there again this year. We're going to see if we can try and align something with Kennedy Hill if there's opportunity to get some others paving out there. Through our maintenance plan, we don't have any plans to come back quite this summer to do any patching because we obviously have to, you know, spread the paving quantities out throughout the central island. But if there is opportunity to capture some of that through Kennedy Hill, then we may be able to do some of that, so.
First question. Okay, perfect. Thank you. And the other one is, I think I brought up with you before, Mike. It's the, there's a very active group here with the invasive species topic, which is Scotch broom and it's around the corner. Are you able to perhaps share your, your plan on, on the road? I guess brush control. Usually it's done after it spreads and it seems, and I'm wondering if you're coming up with a different plan on Scotch broom this year?
Yes, Steph and I were actually just talking about that today. So we'd like to coordinate again with your, to try and catch it when it is, when it is the appropriate time to cut it. So we just want to reach out with your staff and we'll, we'll coordinate our, our mowing and brushing. I think it's important to note too, we only mow in a certain distance as well. So if it's beyond what our specification allows, we won't actually mow any of it or touch any of it. So we don't, we don't actively treat that. We use that, leave that to other invasive species groups like broombusters and stuff to, to deal with those locations.
Yeah, just a little hanging fruit stuff on the side of the highway. I, we do know that some of that, that six feet or whatever it is that you do do, it's there. It's just, it would be appreciated just to, to get that at the appropriate time. Other than that, thank you. We're looking forward to Kennedy Hill. I can't believe it's two years already.
Yeah, I know. It's scary. We're all looking forward to this project being finished.
Yeah.
More than anyone.
Yeah, I'd imagine you like to talk about different things and I know it's a sensitive topic. And when we talk about the nine, nine to one o'clock closure, one of the things I do hear on some of the regional conversations is some of the, the people traveling as far as a Howset or Hot Springs and physically getting from the boat and jumping in their cars to get to that nine o'clock closure, to get to whatever their appointment. So it's not just sometimes us councillors speaking just for our residents, knowing that when we get onto some of these regional calls, that there are some of the indigenous communities a little bit further up north, that it's a struggle to get there. And just to kind of keep that in mind. Okay, well, thanks again, Mike, and I appreciate you guys making the time. So safe travels home.
Thanks a lot.
Okay, take care. Thank you. Okay. We're good. That went really, really well. The phone in was, so good job, Nicole. Thank you. Okay. Before lot 13? Okay, so Joe, just, did you guys hear Joseph there? No, he just made a comment that he did get one, a public input, which we will, he'll read out before we get into lot 13. Okay. Okay, into correspondence, we have three correspondence items. We'll start with 9.1 Financial Hardship Property Tax Deferral Program reinstatement. Do any of the councillors have any comments on this? Okay, on my weekly Vancouver Island mayor conversation, obviously this is a, one that has come up for a lot of other communities. And I do believe that this is something that we do need to support, to give our, our finance department as well as just the citizens of our community that may have some up, up and coming troubles. So I would like to make just the motion that we support this letter. Did you have something? Okay, perfect. And any further discussion? No? Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
opposed, hearing, seeing and none. Thank you very much. And just a little, just a little side note on that last call, and Mr. Boyson will correct me if I'm wrong, but there is, to show you the, the, who owns homes in British Columbia, since we're talking about homes here in near future. Seventy, you're going to have to tune in, Mike or Mark. Seventy percent of homeowners are eligible for the tax deferral program right now. So that would mean that people that are over the age of 55 own residential homes in the province. We actually, the, the Nanaimo mayor, he had made a comment, we actually thought it was 17% and he asked for the number to be reset again and it was actually 70%. So that was kind of, really shows you who owns the homes in, in our province and, and just magnifies the, the problem of, you know, affordability. Do you have anything on that one, Mark? Okay, thank you. Just a little FYI. Well, here's another one. 9.2 Long Weekend BC Ferry Traffic to Vancouver Island. Something that was brought up by air, by the mayor of North Cowichin. And I just want to thank all the council for last minute supporting our name going on to this letter. As we all know, and I'm probably going to queue, queue you councillor Cole here just regarding the importance of, of just trying to maintain the quietness to me long weekend. I didn't know if you perhaps have a few comments, councillor Cole?
I know that with the social distancing fatigue and, and everything that people are feeling because, and, and it's really easy to go down the road and the EOC update for the ACRD is once a week now instead, twice a week. And I'm not getting the EOC updates from my employer on Saturdays and Sundays anymore. And so because we're successful and because things have been going so well, a lot of people due to fatigue of staying inside, et cetera, are starting to feel as though we're getting ready to loosen up. And we may very well be, but we're not there yet. And if we can make it through May long weekend, we don't have another one to worry about till the beginning of July. So I think it's really important that we be proactive instead of reactive and waiting till we get too close to the May long weekend to continue our messaging or reinforce our messaging for the long weekend. Because i- if you listen to Dr. Bonnie Henry and you're, you're keeping close tabs on these things, we're not there yet. And we need to continue being as successful and diligent as we have been because it's, it's, now's the time, otherwise we could end up going through the whole what we've been avoiding and then it will all be for naught.
Okay, great. Thank you. And again, I, I just thank you for all, for, for your support in this letter. And I think it's, it's, it's well represented for a lot of communities on Vancouver Island. Any other comments? Seeing none? Okay. And 9.3 Charter Fishing and Whale Watching Tours COVID-19 Safe Reopening. From Castaway Charters, councillor McEwan.
Yes, we have a Harbour Authority meeting coming up on May 19th. So would it be appropriate to refer this to that meeting?
Very much so.
So I'd like to make the motion to defer this 9.3 issue to our May 19th Harbour Authority meeting.
I will second that.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, hearing, seeing and none. Carried. Thank you very much. We have two information items. First one's COVID-19 Active Fishermen's Committee. No action required. Any comments? And the second one, Statistics Canada Survey. Has it? Oh, did you have something on there, Marilyn? Sorry councillor McEwan?
I just thought it might be appropriate to copy Kevin Court's on, on that document, our harbour master.
Okay, no problem. We'll, we'll do that. Thank you. Anything else? Hearing none, okay. 10.2 Statistics Canada Survey, Impacts of COVID-19 on Canadians. Has anyone filled this out yet? Other than Mr. Boyson? Mr. Boyson says it takes all of five minutes. Is that correct? So I would encourage everybody to, to fill it out and, and spread the word, so. Oh, councillor McEwan, you have a question?
Just wondering if we could fan this out through Uki Mail?
Most certainly.
Do you need a motion or no?
No, I think that's fine.
Okay.
It's done. Thank you. Since you're on the floor, we'll go committee reports. Off to you councillor McEwan.
I attended a virtual Vancouver Island Regional Library meeting by Zoom on Sat, this past Saturday. It was a four hour meeting. There's a lot of business to, to discuss. And just for some informational items, all 39 libraries were closed on March 17th. Vurrell currently has 456 employees and they, 92% of them were laid off until July 2nd with their salaries and benefits intact until June 30th. And in fact, their benefits are being continued till the end of July. So I just thought that was some interesting statistics that, that I could share. And some upcoming meetings, May 13th, the Wall Pacific Trail is conducting a meeting through another platform called Teams. And on May 31st, they're conducting their AGM and they don't yet know if that will be live or virtual. That's it for me.
Great, thank you. Any questions? None, okay. Councillor Kemp's. You're on mute. There you go.
Yes, I'm off mute now. Okay, so I've been attending a weekly, or attending, jumping in on weekly Vicida calls, which is a Vancouver Island Coastal Ecumom Development Association. Today was a very interesting call. We had the BC Restaurant Association on there. And they are, their mandate is to give businesses ways to do business better. And right now it's all about shopping local, which is great, and that's something that I'll expand on in a minute. Next week, there's a whole bunch of protocols coming out regarding sectors, all sectors. The premier's doing a, an announcement next week about, like talking about our, our soft openings and how we're going to move forward with that. And right now it's just about educating and supporting our community. We just have to really remember that. But we're looking at a safe restart and recovery and what that looks like. So next week will be challenging and definitely educational about how we restart. And that, I was going to mention something that about the ferries too, because something will be coming out about that. We just recently, along with Tofino, supported a Bi BC Local campaign. And that is with the one that I was working with in Victoria. So that will be coming out hopefully by the end of this week. I'll have something available. And on that Vicida call today, it was said that Uclut and Tofino are very heavily involved in the Digital Economy Response Program. And that's for any business that wants to go digital. So they have websites and stuff for shopping local. So it's great that Uclut and Tofino were on board with that. And it's interesting, the conversations that are having regarding patios and how the municipalities could help restaurants with reopening. And how do they say it? Just about lessening the time and money to, to be able to expand patios. So I think that's something we have to start thinking about. But they said next week we'll start talking about, more about that as well. And yeah, so then also the, we've been sitting on the BC Chamber weekly updates. And many businesses are part of the Vancouver Island Coastal Tourism Resiliency Program as well. Vancouver Island Coastal Tourism Resiliency Program as well. So that is rolled out, so that's really helping all our businesses. And yeah, then, and the B C Chamber also sits on the, um, uh, a provincial, on the provincial level, um, with the premier and that's with, um, Bonnie Henry and, and the province. And so there's a lot of, so we'll be the first to know about all the different protocols that come out. Yeah, that's it.
Any questions? Oh, what is that? Oh, nope. No, I just want to councillor Kemp's, I think we're just really fortunate that you're having to be councillor, but you're also, um, the executive of the Chamber of Commerce and and I know I keep, thank you, just appreciate that you've got a good handle on that whole business community and getting the information out there, so thank you. Councillor Horr?
No meetings attended. As councillor McEwan said, I am looking forward to the Wild Pacific Trail meeting on the thirteenth. But I am going to put my other work hat on for a second because we are still having issues with people not understanding why a single member from a household should be the only person shopping at the co-op. People have been verbally abusive to our staff when they have asked that a single person, not a couple or a family come in. And, uh, it's really starting to wear on our staff and our staff is under a lot of stress already. So, um, that's what I'm going to report.
That's a good report, well, thank you. And thank you for guarding, uh, and keeping your post there at the co-op. You know, we all appreciate that you're doing that, so. Councillor Cole?
Okay, uh, lots of, seems like living on Zoom. I really like it though. It's, no, it's different than face to face, that's for sure. Of course, that would be my preference, but this is, it's a lot more engaging than a straight up teleconference. Lots of A C R D budget and E O C meetings and our regular meetings on the go. Relayed there as well about the intent to continue messaging through the May long weekend, to think of that ahead of time and, and leading up till then, so that was, that was there as well. The C B D had their, uh, A G M, which Jeff Lyons attended and there were a few things to report, but there will be, there's some follow up. They, they went back to the table on a couple of things about grants, so I'll follow up with you after the follow up happens at the next meeting. They have an o- virtual open house tomorrow, I think. Yeah, and there was in, uh, we were supposed to be at A V I C C and there was a cocktail reception. Did anyone go to the virtual cocktail reception? Sound like fun, but I didn't either. I was just curious if anybody else had. Can all just keep your drinks to yourself or your cocktail hours to yourself? You don't have to share it with everyone. And I think that's it. I teleconference a lot with work in my other hat and ongoing, 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 but nothing, uh, nothing that you're not hearing everywhere else.
Quick question for you, how is that, um, I guess by default going to the A C R D, as you're doing from the conference to your home now, you're, that, that, uh, the Zoom, are they using the Zoom program, did you say?
Yeah, exactly, just like this.
Cool, that's great, so you're finding.
People, you swipe through many screens of, there's, seems to be with the staff and with, you know, anybody that's bringing a delegation or when we're working with the budget or especially the E O C updates because there's many, many other players at those meetings. So there's screens of people. This is a lot easier, just looking at one, one screen of y'all, seeing everybody all at once.
And no travel, which is saving you a lot of days there.
Got little electric cars sitting there kind of lonely.
Yeah, good, well, thank you. And, uh, and myself, um, you know, it's just, I think of all of us, we're, we're all at, uh, haze sometimes, we're just kind of keeping very busy in our own little lives and, and, and our municipal, keeping, uh, keeping that, um, that candle lit. But just a quick one, I do do a weekly, uh, phone call with Scott Fraser and, uh, and I, uh, councillor McEwan, he's going to Andrea, we'll have that answer tomorrow. One of the, uh, questions that councillor McEwan had was, people that do have to self-isolate whether, and they live in, in, in a home and they don't have the means to, for accommodation. And there is a program in the, in the urban cities, in the cities where there is compensation in order to pay for accom- accommodation and, uh, they are doing a review. He did tell me that recently they did do a change to the program, that, uh, the rural communities would be eligible, so he, Andrea will be getting, uh, the information here to the two of us here in the next twenty four hours. So as we go down this path and if we happen to know of, uh, individuals that unable to self-quarantine or they, maybe they have a cold or something and they're unsure of, that there is going to be a bit of a program that's rolling out for the rural communities. Councillor Kemp's, you have a question? You are mute still, there.
There you go. So it's not really a question, but it's just a follow up for that. Andrea McQuaid and I are working with, um, and we had a phone call with Chris Siberius from Bee Hah, I don't know how that's, how you pronounce your name, the other day, but there's, there's a large gap. It's amazing when you lift the crepit up, what you see and what gaps you see in this. But Chris looks after, um, housing the homeless and van lifers and that's where there's funding. However, there's large gaps with B C housing. And what, right now they're just looking at going into urban centers and not rural. So Andrea and I are crafting a letter with, um, Bee, with Chris's background and with Kerry Marshall. And then hopefully with W C R S. And then I will bring it to council just so you can have a look at it, because I believe that there's, um, big gaps in, for B C housing, so I'm just keeping you up to date.
No, that's good, and, 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 and we just happened to run across that with councillor McEwan, but if you, you're hearing those kind of gaps, I think it's important for for us to share that amongst the group and, you know, I, I didn't realize that you were that far ahead on it, councillor Kemp's, which is fantastic. So for hearing of some shortfalls, it's important for that to kind of go up the food chain a little bit, because they want to make sure those gaps are minimized, so that's one of those things of, uh, you can feel a little bit sympathetic for the person, but you know, just take that act, last step there and maybe just send an email out to the group. And, uh, we'll try to, you know, try, try to have that voice heard a little bit, so thank you. And ferry traffic, you know, obviously just the essential, which with their, uh, their, um, just reminding him, you know, the ferry traffic is essential, but with, uh, with the limitations that we do have on the, uh, Kennedy Hill, if those, uh, co-op food trucks or fish trucks, et cetera, you know, they miss, they miss, I've been hearing reports at the ferry that, um, there'll be product coming back to the island. And, uh, then there's empty, uh, low beds or something going on the ferry and they seem to be trumping other trucks, so just trying to really, even in the hierarchy of essential, is a truck full of groceries, uh, uh, should that be, uh, put ahead of an empty tractor trailer that's coming back to the, back empty, so just trying for them to understand that even the fish trucks that are coming back empty, they need to be given a bit of a priority because they're running into the Kennedy Hill program, um, lineup a little bit, so just trying to be a bit of a voice for that industry. Outside of that, um, I have nothing else to report and unless there's any questions, hearing seen and none? Did you want me to go to the input now, Joseph? Okay. So we're at, uh, twelve point one, which is public participation in council meetings during covid nineteen. Okay, Mr. Boyson?
Through the mayor, so this is a, a report put together by Mr. Rothenberg, uh, manager of corporate services, and so we, we've had some changes as our second meeting, doing the online meetings. Um, and it's been working very well, thanks to our staff for making everything work seamlessly so far. The public input component of things has been one of those discussion points for us to be looking at and looking at uh, the provincial orders that were provided about, um, the expectations for public to be a part of meetings. There is, uh, that ability for us to close the meetings to the public, and so this we were putting forward council, to have that decision and then we also some recommendations that would go through that as well for community input, um, in place, uh, through an email process that would be monitored during the meetings, so. But this is up to council to decide, uh, we just, we put this one out here just to get clarification. And, uh, the last two meetings, this is our second meeting and there's, uh, no public seeking to come into these meetings right now, so it might not be necessary, but we just wanted to give council the, the opportunity to consider it.
Any kind of councillor McEwan, any kind of comments from councillors?
I was just going to offer to move recommendation one. Would you like me to read it out?
Yep, please do.
That council direct staff to A, close council chambers to the public during open council meetings until ministerial order number M zero eight three expires. B, read public input submitted to community input at uclut.ca during open council meetings at the public input section of the agenda until council chambers is reopened to the public. And C, read questions submitted to community input at uclut.ca during open council meetings at the question period section of the agenda until council chambers is reopened to the public.
Okay, seconded by councillor Cole. Any further discussion? Councillor Kemp's?
I just have a question. So, um, um, B, read public input submitted to community input. Does that mean, um, all the letters submitted regarding lot thirteen are going to be read out?
Joseph's working towards it, Mike here to answer your question.
Through the mayor, um, the intent of this resolution is to read out public input received during the council meeting. It's the thinking behind it is that usually the public would be here to provide input during that period of time and then ask questions during the question period. So the thinking is that we can receive emails like we have today and read those emails during the public input, input period, provided they're provided before that period commences or during that period. And then the questions during the question period, provided they're provided before the question period, but during the council meeting.
Thank you, Joey. I, I just wanted to make sure that that was clear for everyone watching.
Any other comments? Because I, I'd just like to make one. You know, I, I understand that this putting, I think staff is putting that and just want to see where we're at. I, I want to just emphasize that fact is that we've done two council meetings. They've been, the door's been open for the public to come in here, no public has showed up. I guess I'm just a little bit nervous, the, uh, closing it up. And, uh, for that odd one or two person, um, that may want to sit here, because it is, you know, it's a very large room, if there was someone that wanted to, one or two people wanted to show up. Because, um, not everybody is connected via the internet and, and able to access and, and make some comments, so. You know, I'm supportive of it, if that's what the group would like to do. I just feel that in the coming two, two weeks or three weeks, whenever our next council meeting is, that this document may have been, already been dated by the time we come to our next meeting. So, uh, you know, I see that there's value that staff putting this forward and that maybe other communities have done that, but, you know, to date, um, kind of closing the door, this last little connection for our community to be able to make some comments, especially where we're coming into, we're going to be pushing, uh, forward our, our budget. And, uh, and really trying to making sure that we do have probably a suggestion box outside the district office and giving people just, you know, free access a little bit, so I, I'm a little bit, I'm supportive of it, but I'm also the next breath. Um, I'm wondering whether, um, you know, in two or three weeks, whether we're going to say, you know, let's re- re-sing this, so any of your thoughts? Councillor Cole?
This isn't to say that we couldn't by the next time we meet, um, change our mind. And because things are evolving, we have no idea what the next two weeks is going to look like and it, I would, I agree with what you're saying and that there's no harm, no foul in keeping the doors open except for I don't think anybody's expecting it and because of this, to align with, it's not something we came up with our own or it's, it is something that is is out there, and so I think it's completely appropriate to do it and I, probably nobody would even notice if, if we weren't.
I know, the, the notice part, I agree with you for sure. Okay, and I just wanted to say my two bits, so, um, I guess we have a seconder and I'll just call it the question, all in favor? Opposed? Carried, so thank you very much. Mr. Rothenberg, I am going to go for public input. You have one comment?
Once again, through the mayor, um, we received, um, an email from Elizabeth Tatchen. She says, hello, council and staff. I would like to preface this by saying that my home internet connection is not reliable. Therefore, I'm sending my question in advance of the discussion regarding lot thirteen. She sends three questions. The first question says, how can you guarantee the community that the housing to be built really will be affordable housing for locals? And that it will remain so in the future? I ask because there seems to be a lot of loopholes for the developer, such as claiming hardship, which would allow him to drastically alter the current plans to suit his own needs, e.g. overpriced units, selling to non-locals, vacation cottages, all with question marks. Given the major succession, uh, concessions, zoning, environmental, financial in brackets, that council has proposed to make for this developer, it would be a huge slap in the face to the neighboring property owners if we end up with anything other than long-term affordable housing on lot thirteen. So that's question one. Question two, regarding late agenda item lot thirteen Marine Drive by Drew, uh, by Bruce Grieg. My question is, how is this option to purchase in the updated no subdivision covenant supposed to help assure the community that the affordable housing development will go ahead as planned? All I see is that encourages the developer to complete the subdivision of the land within two years. What he gets to do with the subdivided lots after that is unclear, please explain. Also, please clarify for the layperson what exactly a complete subdivision of the land entails. So that's question two. Number three is who gets to own and or purchase the eleven rental units? Is the plan for the developer to keep them and profit from them? Question mark. Um, and then she says, thank you. And, um, she lives on Marine Forest Lane.
Perfect, thank you. So that's the one question, public input. Uh, before we get into legislation, do you mind? I was looking for, I'd like to just propose a five-minute recess. And then, um, if I can get a seconder on that one? Okay, all in favor? Opposed, carried, thank you. Five-minute recess and we'll get back to this, thank you. Okay, we'll resume and, uh, thank you. Okay, legislation, lot thirteen Marine Drive, propose affordable housing. We're going to start with Mr. Greg on this one, um.
Thank you, uh, through the, through the mayor. So this is a rezoning application, this is lot thirteen Marine Drive, which council has, uh, seen before a couple of times and, uh, Nicole, maybe I'll just ask if you can pull up the slides and go to that. I think it's, uh, slide number two, which is the, the site plan. It'd be a good time to throw it up. So council saw this back in November, on November twenty sixth, uh, twenty nineteen, and also March seventeenth in your meeting then, uh, to give initial readings to the bylaws. So I'm not going to go into the details of the application, it's, you know, it's a small lot, single-family affordable, development, which will be on the screen momentarily here. It's being proposed, uh, by Andrew McLean of, of A C M C Holdings. Yeah, thank you. And, um, uh, as councils aware, council, uh, made a decision when looking at this in March and first considering the resuming bylaw that, um, to, to waive the holding of a public hearing, uh, which is certainly within council's provision under the, the legislation. Uh, and certainly given the circumstances of not having to, not, not wishing to, uh, gather a large group of citizens in one room to have a hearing, was a, I think, wise decision at the time. And instead, um, gave notice of that decision and as part of the notice, sought input by writing. So and it really allowed, there, there was a month between that meeting and when we, um, were gathering up all of the input, uh, by written submission. And so in the agenda, uh, package today is, uh, some, I believe it's eighty-eight pages of public input. Those emails and letters that folks have written and. Those emails and letters that folks have written and they touched on, uh, a whole number, a wide range of, uh, topics and. And aspects of the development. Um, and there were definitely, uh, I, I won't go into, uh, all, you know, all of that, though there may be questions that come out of this. Uh, but, you know, and sort of, as in the report, I suggested there, a number of the comments were sort of recurring, uh, themes that they were touching on. Around, uh, questions around location, density, aesthetics, environmental impact. And the, the process and there were, you know, certainly there were comments about the waiving of the public hearing and where do we, where are we at in the process? And, and, um, you know, council has now received all that correspondence and has read all of it. Uh, so, so again, I won't summarize, um, what I've done, you know, within the report touching on it. But if there are questions about specifics of that, and which come up, you know, from council, I'd be happy to, to field them. So, uh, but just in terms of process and agreements, uh, because this is, um, this is a rezoning decision that council is, is looking at, uh, today. Uh, but, uh, but it's also, the proponent is not currently the owner of the land. So the, the land is owned by a warehouse or company. And Andrew McLean of ACMC Holdings is making application and there is a, uh, an agreement between them for the property to transfer. And, but also the B.C. Housing, they're, you know, the, the, Mr. McLean is, the developer is, is proposing to partner with B.C. Housing as part of this, uh, development. So it's, it's a, it's a bit complex. So we've put, and Nicole, if you could move to the next slide, please. Put together a graphic to try and explain sort of the, the UR here in the process. So, so this, um, which is in the, the staff report that's in your agenda today. Was our attempt to try and make some sense of what are all the pieces that are part of what's a fairly complex, um, land development. Approval process and, and land deal. So the column on the left, which A, which talks about the rezoning stage council. Is, uh, really the, what's being requested is adopting a zoning amendment for the property. Uh, to, to allow the form of development that's been proposed in the, the small lots. Also adopting a housing agreement by law. Uh, and at this time, there'd be the registration of what we're referring to as the no subdivision restrictive covenant on lot thirteen. Which basically says, uh, you know, here's a plan that has been proposed, the graphic I showed, or a moment ago. Um, essentially that the, the development will just be, will be that, um, that it's committing to that form of development. Uh, unless, you know, unless the district were to, to agree to it. So it's basically holds the developer to what he's proposing. At the same time, then it would be, uh, discharging what is already on title, which is called a no build covenant. Uh, which becomes obsolete for that other one that's in there. And then the box in purple with a big arrow pointing to it is a piece that, um, we had. Uh, I think earlier, uh, I sort of assumed or had associated with, um, the, the subdivision stage was sort of the third stage here. So. Um, I'll maybe I'll just briefly talk about after the rezoning stage we're in. The developer would, you know, assuming if the rezoning were approved. The next step would be to go through and apply for a development permit and a development variance permit. And, and there are some pieces that are listed there that would happen at that stage, including a lot more detail on things like, um, you know, and council had passed a motion previously. Uh, back in March, uh, listing some of the things they expect to see, including more detail on grading drainage, the impact on streams. Um, landscaping, those sort of details would come in with the development permit plans. Following that, if the development permit were issued, then he'd be able to go through and apply for the subdivision. Which is this next stage, which really gets into the details of engineering and all the legal agreements. Um, that are part of taking one large parcel and splitting it into the number of small lots that are being proposed there. Uh, dedicating roads and park and all of those pieces. Those are part of subdivision stage. At that subdivision stage, we had been, um, assuming that at that point. You are, um, when this, when that subdivision is registered, there would be. All of these small affordable lots with a housing agreement registered on each of the titles of those lots. Which then commits them to one-third of them being rental affordable housing and two-thirds of it being ownership affordable housing under. The, the B.C. Housing program that Mr. McLean is proposing to partner with. And so at that point, we deemed that as sort of the earliest stage where, uh, would be considered that, okay, it's a, it is a clear path to. What would be the affordable housing that is being built there on those thirty-three lots that can only be used for that affordable housing. And so at that point, we'd recommended that that would be the time to sort of give credit, if you will, for that to warehouse or corporation. And that's the other piece of this is that there is a master development agreement on the warehouseers other lands. Where there's a benefit to the warehouse or corporation by, for getting, uh, by having, having the affordable housing developed here. Uh, was part of allowing greater density of development on their other lands. So that credit, it has some value for warehouseers other lands. And that was, um, that was put in place when lot thirteen was created and the zoning was put in place and the current no build covenant that's on lot thirteen. Was really part of all of making sure that that one day would happen. And so those pieces have been in place for the last fifteen years. And so at this point, where the, it gets to that subdivision stage, we had suggested that that would be the time to, uh. Recognize that they've met, met that milestone and provide credit. What's currently being requested is that, and this has to do with the, the land transfer agreement. Between ACMC Holdings and Warehouse Corporation is that they would, uh, it's important to warehouse or that that be done at the rezoning stage. Um, so, so we are, it's in terms of the, the UR here, map here, we're at the, uh, column A. And some of the discussion, the details and what's in the late agenda, I, package and the report on your agenda. Has a very much to do with the timing of that purple box about amending the master development agreement to give credit to warehouse or. Um, so, um, really it's a matter of when, who, who accepts the risk? Um, and the question, one of the questions of the public is, you know, what guarantees that this will be built? And so, um, the, essentially, uh, with, if, after the rezoning is put in place, rezoning doesn't force the developer to build anything. Um, it, it is, uh, would allow for it to be built, but really doesn't commit or force them to, to follow through and do it. So. I think the concern for warehouse or was that if they, if the rezoning happens and the land transfers to ACMC Holdings. Then warehouse or would have no control over when that, um, subdivision occurred or when the housing is actually built. And so they could wait some unknown amount of time before they actually receive, they receive credit for the affordable housing. Um, likewise, if we, what our concern as the, and, uh, as the staff advising council. Is that from the district side, we're looking, what's the public interest? And we don't want the public to take the risk of giving credit for something which hasn't been built yet. It doesn't exist. And what if the project goes on hold? And, uh, because that happens with development from time to time. And, uh, and if so, um, we, we don't think it would be a good deal for the public to have. Um, you know, granted rezoning and, uh, and then, and given credit for housing when the housing isn't built. Um, so the. I think, um, there's sort of, you know, two things that are, are, uh, it's sort of new pieces or, or more detailed pieces of information that are in the agenda. One is, um, that, that, you know, this request and, um, the ACMC Holdings is now. And in the late item, it gives it, gives it in detail, is proposing to take that risk. And the term of, um, putting this no subdivision covenant. Including what is referred to as an, you know, an offer to, uh, purchase, which would essentially, uh, lay it out so that if. It's, it would commit Mr. McLean and ACMC Holdings to a timeline for the development. So if we're, if the rezoning is adopted, but with that registration of the no subdivision covenant on lot thirteen. It would commit him to a timeline of, um, essentially if there, if he hadn't completed the subdivision. By registering those lots, those affordable lots with the land title office within two years. Then the district would have an option to buy the property for a nominal fee. Um, so if the developer decided to put it on hold or walk away, there's a, there's a timeline. It wouldn't be for another fifteen years or twenty years or something like that. Basically has two years from, from May first to, uh, to complete it to the point of having created those small affordable lots. And under the no subdivision covenant, when those lots are created, they can only be created with the housing agreement registered on each individual title. Committing, you know, lot one through twenty-two, those are going to be ownership lots under the B.C. Housing AHO program. And, you know, the next eleven lots being, uh, affordable rental under that housing agreement. That's all defined and sort of set up to go into place. Um, with this sort of new bit, new clause of the option, it, it really now brings a timeline into the, into the picture. So that we think is significant. Um, and, and on the basis of that, on the strength of that, uh, we're recommending that council could, uh. It, it is really in a position to, A, consider all of the public input and whether this is, um. Providing a net benefit to the community. And that's something that council and tribal have some discussion on when I stop talking. And, uh, but then, um, so consider the input and then decide whether there is support for this rezoning. Um, and for this, uh, notion of giving credit now, uh, on the strength of having this, um. Option to purchase as part of the no subdivision covenant, uh, which sort of puts a guarantee in place. At least on, uh, for what that timeline would be before something has to happen, which is relatively soon. I think the twenty-four months gives enough time for that subdivision to be completed. And it's a, it's a detailed process and a lot of engineering is involved. But that should be enough time to do it. So, um, so it is a fairly, uh, you know, I think realistic timeframe. But, and that's not, you know, endless someday in the future. It's, uh, it's within two years. And on that's, on the strength of that, um, council, I think, is in a position to consider adopting the rezoning, uh, today even. Um, and that, um, if that's council's wish, the amended list of recommendations, or recommended motions, the wording of that. Uh, will sort of set, set that into place. So I can certainly answer questions on that as well. Um, the other thing that, uh, I was suggested that perhaps I should overview slightly, and, and we also had in the agenda. Was, um, the clarification from B.C. Housing, the degree of commitment that they're looking at within their AHO program. So, uh, Nicole, if I could ask you to advance it to the next slide. So this was, uh, B.C. Housing. Um, so they have a program. So this is one of many programs they have. It's called the Affordable Home Ownership Program. So there's two things, I'll just step back and B.C. Housing is, uh, and perhaps Mr. McLean can speak to it later, uh, in more detail. If, uh, if there are questions from council as well, but they're, they're looking at, uh, participating on a couple of ways. One is actually being the bank that finances, uh, provides the, the financing for the construction costs. Um, but also that they're involved with, uh, with this affordable, affordable homeownership program, which I'll refer to with AHO. Um, is a, is a program that they've got where they are lowering the cost, the purchase price for. A qualifying household to buy one of these homes on a lot. Um, and they do it by putting a second mortgage on the property, kind of acting like mom and dad saying, oh, we'll help, we'll help you out. Here's a contribution. And essentially it's a second mortgage that is, um, has, you know, there's, there's a certain framework around it where, um, you know, that the person. Purchasing it isn't expected to be paying back that second mortgage. It's just sitting there on title, uh, until they sell it. So, um, the, you know, asking Nicole to move forward one more slide. The way it sort of works here is this is meant to be kind of a graph and not just tall skinny houses, but for an example, on the left, far left. Where if, if, let's say we have a home which between land development and, and construction of the building and everything. Comes in, the cost to build it is around, you know, around number of three hundred thousand dollars. If for a qualifying household making, say, median income, they can afford, you know, two hundred thousand dollars. Uh, AHO comes in and they, they offer that second mortgage to, you know, pay the difference, the hundred thousand dollars and it's on title. So the buyer is getting a, if you will, a three hundred thousand dollar house for only two hundred thousand dollars of cash upfront. They have to go qualify for their own mortgage and all the rest of it. And they make their mortgage payments on the two hundred thousand dollar value. And AHO just sits there holding that other hundred thousand dollars. If they were to sell it, so the next one, which refers to buyer number two, say they sell it six years down the road. Um, and I say six because one of the, this, uh, stipulations in the AHO program is the initial buyer has to, uh, uh. Basically use it as their primary residence for the first five years. This is intended to not be something that is flipped right away. Um, and, uh, so there's some exceptions there, but it, for, you know, someone has a hardship case, they got to apply to B.C. Housing and that sort of thing. But it really is intended to be home for families. Uh, so say the second buyer purchases it and, and land values have gone up and, and, uh. The wages have gone up, so they can afford to purchase this thing and they qualify. Then B.C. Housing will offer to roll that mortgage over for the next buyer. You got another qualifying buyer. They only pay two hundred and twenty-five thousand and, and they get the home, you know, the benefit of the home. And so that can go on, as long as they're the qualifying buyer who wants to be part of the program. B.C. Housing is quite happy to, you know, keep them in the program. If you get to, say, a day down the road where it's, uh, you know, so the market value of it is five hundred thousand dollars. And you have a buyer who wants to purchase that and they either don't qualify under the AHO program or they don't want to. Then they could pay you the five hundred thousand dollars for it. Your buyer number two, who bought it in the past. They don't get all five hundred thousand dollars. They get their portion, which in this case would be three hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. So they've made equity. But the AHO, uh, mortgage, when it is paid out at that point by that third buyer. The first, you know, if they're paying off both mortgages, you know, going to the one that buyer number two is holding and the one that AHO is holding. The increase in value proportionates, the AHO mortgage value has gone up. And then what's, I think, probably cut off just right at the screen there. Is that all of that value, if it's coming out of the program, because the buyer who's going in is not. An affordable qualifying buyer, that goes to the district, that goes to UCLOT's Affordable Housing Reserve Fund. So, um, that's, uh, interesting and, and unique little tool as part of this that B.C. Housing has worked out. Where the value of all that, and Nicole, I'll ask you to go to the next slide on this. So they, this is looking at what's the value of all of the mortgages that B.C. Housing will provide for those twenty-two lots. Is they take what is our contributions. So this council has indicated it's willing to contribute the three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Uh, from the Barclay Community Forest dividends, uh, which really are offsetting some of the servicing costs of building the road and the water and the sewer line and whatnot. So that's a, that's a significant contribution. But B.C. Housing are, are also looking at, um, what they count as developer contributions and also one internally to sort of round it out to a certain percentage. So they're saying at this point, the seven hundred and sixteen thousand dollars would be the value that they're putting into this development. So that's spread over twenty-two ownership second mortgages. And, um, you know, the, the wording in their, in their letter, which they provided, it does have a little bit of a caveat there. And that's simply because they're, um, under the terms of their program, that they can't completely commit until. Um, the municipality is at the point of issuing a development permit. But they've done the review of the development and all of the costs which we've provided them, which developer has as well. And so their math is coming out to, you know, this is, this they're signaling is what the, uh, the commitment would be. Which is a, a, essentially it means when, if all of those were to move out of the AHO program over time. That seven hundred and sixteen thousand would come back to the municipality, that those dollars, you know, will stay in UCLOT. And that's part of an agreement municipality has with B.C. Housing as part of this. And then the last thing I would do, other than answering questions, would be ask Nicole to go to the, I think, which is the last slide. Which was on the, um, so these are the seven motions, which are your late agenda. Um, we did adjust the recommendations based on what we were seeing today and from the agreement that, uh, we're hearing from. Um, from, we believe, uh, ACMC Holdings, their indication and warehouse or. That, um, these motions council could step through and I can walk through them if you like. Um, that would really accomplish the adoption of the rezoning by law, the housing agreement by law. It would put, authorize the, um, agreements of, uh, putting the no subdivision covenant, the option to purchase in place. And indicating, um, number three, we're suggesting indicate. Um, that that's based on if council is prepared to author, authorize the modification of the master development agreement. That's essentially giving the credits to warehouse or concurrent, you know, at the time of, of registering this no subdivision covenant with the option to purchase. It's being offered by the developer, uh, on the title of lot thirteen. Um, so that sort of ties it together and with that timeline that, you know, that he's committed to. The other one, number five is indicating, is again, part of the timeline that Mr. McLean has proposed. Um, is, is, we also put a timeline on the three hundred and twenty thousand contribution. So that's, it's basically, here's eighteen months to get this thing rolling. So that's basically, here's 18 months to get this thing rolling. And so it's not an open-ended, oh, expect that that money is sitting there forever, which we feel is significant. So with that, I think I probably should just stop and see if there are any questions from council. And yes, leave it at that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gregg. Are there any questions from any of the councillors at this point? councillor Cap?
So to the mayor, to Mr. Gregg, I just have one question about, in the beginning of your slides, you mentioned that offer, option to purchase, and you said a nominal fee. How is that calculated?
Through the mayor, $33 is the amount that's in the option purchase. So in the late agenda item, the appendix is what's referred to as the no subdivision covenant. Within that, there's a section that talks to option purchase. And so basically, it sets a date, which is May 1st, 2022. So two years from now, if Lot 13 hasn't been subdivided into a bunch of small affordable lots, then council would have the option to buy Lot 13 for $33.
May I ask one more question, and then I'll, I've got quite a few questions, so I'll just ask one more question. So when can a covenant be added to the development to guarantee that the finances are covered on something like this?
Through the mayor, generally, generally, we don't register covenants to guarantee a developer, you know, has financing. That's not something that municipalities do, and you do see sometimes developments grind to a halt. And that's, yeah, proving financial ability isn't a typical consideration of a municipal approval process. What we do secure is the sort of public side of things. So if there's works and services about providing, you know, if there'd be a servicing agreement for constructing the road, that includes bonding, you know, so all of your engineered, basically, part of the subdivision process is doing all the detailed engineering on your civil works, your water, your sewer, your roads. We would make sure we have a servicing agreement and bonding for that, so that the developer walks away and doesn't finish it, we can have the pull on the bond to complete it. If, or if they don't do it to our standard, we can, you know, use it to upgrade and make sure it meets our standard. So the other elements is through the development permit process, we look at ensuring that there is security there for things that are in the public interest in the size like environmental protection. So if you have, you know, stream restoration, there's works that need to be done, you can apply a deposit to that. The other is landscaping, so say Boulevard improvements, that's more of an urban thing, but in this case, it's the screening, I think is being proposed, that if that's part of a development, that we can require a security deposit, and that's either cash that we hold in an account or a letter of credit, which basically a bank is providing, that is saying that, you know, here's 125% of the value of doing that work, so that the developer doesn't follow through. And it's rare, but sometimes they do, you know, you get a developer who, they build it and they don't want to, you know, do the landscaping in front of their industrial development or something like that, then the municipality isn't left with nothing. You have the ability to use that to apply it to completing that part of the project.
Okay, thank you. I just have, I have one more question than most of my questions are for Mr. McLean. So I understand, and this is a question that's come up in a lot of the, so I'm doing this for the audience as well. So I understand when Rainforest was developed, for example, and also there's a few other developments in town that, when it was developed, there was a, I don't know if it was the development scheme that said that this, you had to be put in, but it was made to that everyone had to have a sewage grinder on their lot. So is this, so where does that come into play? And is that part of the municipality to say and do that, or is that the developer?
So you refer to, I mean, I think what you're thinking is called a building scheme. And there's a couple of things that may happen. As part of the subdivision process, and that's, to short answer your question, at the subdivision process, those kind of things are put on the titles of the lots that are created. So when Rainforest was created, there were some covenants that are put on in the district. Also is a building scheme, which doesn't name the district, that's something that the developer typically uses to try and keep up the value of the property, if you will. So sometimes developers will say, will put things in there around, you know, you have to have a certain minimum finish and level of quality of the home. I've seen them where they say no clotheslines, no storing boats and RVs in the front driveway, that sort of thing, to try and keep up appearances, if you will. And so that is really a marketing tool for developers to use that. They can include other things as well. So I'm not sure, I'm not familiar with whether, you know, grinder pump would be part of the building scheme or another covenant. I think it's probably part of the building scheme. It may, and I suspect that it wouldn't be on all lots, it would be those, really the grinder pump for an individual lot, making sure that, okay, someone who's buying a lot in that development, they are aware when they're buying it, it's on title, so you're going to need to put in your own private, you know, sump and pump to pump your sewage up to, because you're going uphill to get to the sewer main. That would be, it's really determined by gravity. If you have lots that are on downhill side, those ones, they may have put that on title to give people the heads up, this is going to be part of what you're faced when you build your house. And so that really is a question of, you know, when the subdivision is being laid out and engineered, oh, we have some lots that are low, and the only way they can really service is, you know, if that's the acceptable design, is that those individual lots, it's going to be on them to put in a pump, and they got to maintain it to get to the municipal main. Does that answer your question?
No, it does, but I just thought it was interesting that when, and I'll bring my, I shouldn't do this, but when I was looking at buying a lot in Rainforest Lane, every single lot in there, and some are lower and some are higher, and that's where I'm just getting my head wrapped around, they all had, were made to put in a grinder pump. And I'm like, what is that, does the municipality put that out, or does the developer put that out? Where does that come into play? I don't understand it.
I, you know, I have to look into what the details of how, we have to go back in time and see how that subdivision was done 15 years ago. Generally, and it may be the language is there for all lots, basically, if you need a grinder pump, it's on you, the cost. And they just copy and put the exact same language on every building scheme on every lot. And so if you're uphill and you have gravity working for you, well, then you don't need it. It's, I think the key is, it was probably, I'm guessing here, making it clear that, oh, don't expect the municipality to put it in place for you. And also, you're aware that this is a cost you may have to bear, and you don't come back on the developer of saying, hey, you sold me a lot that the sewer system doesn't drain, and now I got to put in a sump and a pump, and I wasn't expecting that. I think that's what that was all about.
Yeah, you answered mine, there you go, thank you.
councillor McEwen?
Thank you, through the mayor, to Mr. Gregg. I was surprised how many letters came in where people were surprised that this piece of land, Lot 13, was going to be used for affordable housing. And you have addressed that on page 55 of your report, under location. And so just to clarify, and for the benefit of the audience, the M D A or Master Development Agreement for Lot 13 has been in place since about 2003, I believe. And it, I believe it predates any of the M D As on Rainforest, Cedar Grove, or any of the surrounding sort of cul-de-sacs. Is that correct?
Through the mayor, so the timing of this, I look back at it, so the Rainforest subdivision that's immediately to the south was registered in the fall of 2005. The comprehensive development zoning for that whole rest of Ocean West in there, that included Lot 13 being zoned for affordable housing, was happening at exactly the same time. I think the final adoption of the bylaw was October of 2005, so at the same time as the subdivision Rainforest was being done. And that predates the creation of the subdivision, the other phases going further north. Those were, you know, one large parcel and hadn't been created into lots. And the Lot 13 itself was created some years ahead of that. So this, yes, this is the short answer, is that the master development agreement, the comprehensive development zoning, you know, and this lot being set aside, it was one of two that were to be set aside by Warehouser for affordable housing. This one exists, the other one doesn't exist yet, it's further north on lands that they haven't got around to developing and subdividing. And that's, you know, part of Warehouser's consideration of, okay, are we getting credit for this? Is that it's, for 15 years, it's been essentially sitting there as the expectation that at some point it would be developed. So they're hoping to, if this goes forward with A C M C, that they would receive that credit for their other developments further north. Can I answer your question?
Yes, and so the neighbors, when they bought property in Rainforest and Cedar Grove, they would know, they would have been told that that lot would be, was intended for low-income housing.
Through the mayor, I cannot speak to what they were told, but at the time that they purchased those lots, the zoning would have been clear that this was for affordable housing. That was a lot that was already, for some years, had been part of a proposal and through the O C P designating what was going to happen on those Warehouser lands. And it was right at the same time they were doing the subdivision, the legal work to create those lots was at the same time where they went through a bylaw process adopting the zoning, which hasn't been changed. So it is essentially that, right now, the, since 2005, that property, which is the current zoning bylaw, Lot 13's been zoned for affordable housing as its principal use, and it's had what's, what we refer to as the no build covenant that is registered on Lot 13, which simply says, you will not build anything on this property unless it is affordable housing, under an affordable housing agreement with the District of Euclid.
Great, thank you.
Thanks for that question, Mayor, or councillor McEwen. Any other questions for Mr. Gregg? councillor Hor?
Sorry, just getting off mute. A couple of people raised in the public input, who is in charge of taking care of the common areas and things that are part of this? So the road and the little park area. Is that the district, or, because there is no strata, these are freehold lots, so there is no, you know, overarching group. So who does, who is responsible there?
Through the mayor, it's a good question, that essentially, in it, short answer is District of Euclid. The parks, the roads would be dedicated, they'd be built to our standard, improved to our standard, although there is an application to vary the standard to allow a narrower road, that it would become district-owned infrastructure that we would maintain, just like other roads in the municipality. So essentially, you know, it's a, it's small, it's compact, otherwise it's a neighborhood. You know, it's, you have three quarters, you know, in terms of the question of who would maintain this. It's a municipal road, municipal park, and individually, you've got two-thirds of the lots would be owned by the residents living there. And a third of them would be owned by others, but rented, so you'd have tenants within those homes. And so the housing agreements that are drafted and attached to your agenda would be on either the ownership, specifically the ownership and the rental lots. And so the ownership really sets it up so that those lots can only be sold through that B C Housing A H O P program, where B C Housing are looking at and qualifying the buyers. And the rental agreement is one where there's a reporting mechanism and there's schedules there that they report in, which was to the district to see that it's, you know, yes, the person in there, do they still comply, and is he or complying with that? And, you know, there was a question earlier from the person who wrote in, that, you know, question, who gets to own those 11 rental units? There's no restriction on who can own them, but the owner can't live in them, essentially, thereby, it's, its use is for rental. So that if, you know, an investor, whether Mr. McLean or A C M C Holdings holds on to those and simply is the landlord and rents them out, or chooses to sell some of them, whether to individuals or businesses, the intent being that whoever owns them isn't using it for their housing, it's then made available for rental. And the housing agreements that's on there specifies, A, the income level of somebody who can live in that unit, and thereby also their rent level, which is affordable for that income level. That's all defined in that agreement that's in your agenda.
Did you have a second question there? Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, tangential to that one. The other thing a lot of people were concerned about, and I understand this, was the width of the road, because it's significantly narrower than a standard road width. Do we have roads of that width anywhere else in the district? Because it will be a road where you can't park on the side of it, there will be issues with people trying to pass on that road. I know a number of people were concerned about emergency services, but I do understand that emergency services has looked at it, and both them and, like, the garbage services and things, they can make the corners, as it were. But do we have other places where we have that width of road?
Through the mayor, that's not our standard, but I'd also offer that none of our roads are standard. We have various types of construction that have occurred. That the, the road width, it's essentially, what's really narrow is that there isn't a parking lane or a shoulder for parking within it. It's two fairly regular, essentially 10-foot wide lanes for traffic, so two-way traffic is fine. And that actually is quite a bit wider than, say, Imperial Lane, which is a very narrow old lane. And so it's forced, essentially, the district has that set up to be a one-way. But that's part of a network of roads, so the one-way can work there. In this case, no, it's a two-way. What is key is that it really is going to be designed, going to be clear that there's no on-street parking here. And if someone does park on the street, that's a bylaw issue, that you basically be parking, blocking the lane of traffic. And not to say that nobody, you know, people do that, you see people double park and do some crazy things, even on Peninsula Road in the summertime and stuff. But that's, that is not permitted, and so it doesn't tend to last very long. For one thing, neighbors tend to complain about it immediately if someone's blocking the road.
Yeah, they do. I think, you know, for myself, just to answer your question, councillor Hor, one of the things I did compare was St. Jacques Boulevard, it's, if you go down that road, it's very similar to what's being proposed in this development. Did you have a follow-up question?
Yes and no, it's not a follow-up to that, but is it, I know that this one is just rezoning, but is it at the development permit stage where we get to say, you know, all of these have to be over top of, say, an unfinished basement or crawl space? Taking into account a number of people who were concerned with the lack of storage, and having lived in affordable housing myself, and currently living in a multi-unit that has storage issues, this is something that I just, it's going to be on my radar all the time. So I'm just wondering where we can make those comments or make that happen.
So through the mayor, a couple of things, I think that comment you can make right now, in terms of a, and that's been a discussion with the developer, and has, you know, he's indicated a willingness to do that subject to the soils and the soil condition, because he's going to hit some bad rock. We walk on the site, you can see it's, in some places, it's right there, and there's going to be some removal of rock that's required for the development. Other places where there is softer soils, that would be, you know, I think quite easy to do. That is detail that, you know, we're not at at the rezoning stage. If council wanted that to be, say, you know, if it were to be, if it were key for council, that that be a commitment to say, 100% of these homes must be built with a full basement, that is something that, you know, that would be a discussion to have now. And I think I'd suggest put that on the covenant to say, look, you're not going to get your subdivision of this into these small lots unless you have a covenant that is guaranteeing that that individual lot be constructed with a full basement. That could be done now. That hasn't been sort of the discussion or what's been set up here, partly because, you know, recognizing that, I think we do have some ground issues, which would limit it from being 100%. But that could certainly be part of the discussion with the development permit as well, to say, okay, as you go further down, tell us how many are going to be building to a full basement, or what's your option there? So, and that may be a question council might want to put to the developer as well, whether he would be willing to make that sort of commitment, or, again, have a discussion of how, is that crucial? And what's practical, I guess, is the two things for council to consider.
Okay, thank you. I know he's, the developer's eager to answer some questions. Are there some more questions for Mr. Gregg from any of the councillors? Okay, thank you. I know he's, the developer is eager to answer some questions. Are there some more questions for Mr. Greg from any of the counselors? Okay, hearing and seeing none, I'm just going to welcome Mr. Andrews to the microphone and I imagine there's going to be some more questions for him.
Everybody hear me?
Yes, sir.
Good on. Okay, yeah, I am here to answer some questions for you. I also have uh, one of my consultants, Nigel Gray of McDonald Gray. Uh, available to answer some questions as well.
And what's, and what's Nigel doing for you?
Uh, Nigel is my, uh, he's my land planner, so he's the one who came up with the uh, the subdivision layout and um, him and his wife are also the landscape architects.
Okay, wonderful. I'll give the floor to which counselor would like to add the first question. Okay, Counselor Kamps.
Um, hi Andrew.
Hello.
Thanks for coming. Hey, can you explain to me our riparian areas and the setbacks? Is there um, an option and are we able to um, lower the density to be able to um. Not have as many homes built, but keep the setbacks as is and not ask for a variance?
Um, so you're, you're looking for just to de-densify basically and keep the setbacks, you know?
Yeah.
Um, it's really only impacting, you know, one or two, um, you know, at that, so um, I. I would like to continue on with the plan that we've, that we've had, if it's a, if it's an absolute deal breaker. You know, I, we could amend, I would rather, you know, more affordability and um, you know. Keep it the way it is.
Is there a specific area in reference that you were speaking to? Counselor Kamps, when you say about setbacks, because on the sidelines, they're eight meters at the moment, are they not?
Uh, eight and ten.
Yeah, eight and ten, so are you referring to the front of Marine Drive?
Uh, I'm referring to the front of Marine Drive.
Oh, yeah, so.
Rarian areas, I believe that they're, they're, you are asking for a variance on the riparian areas as well?
Uh, correct, um, that's just for um, the ones not on Marine Drive, that's actually on the ones that, that back on to the uh, to the stream there. Um, on Marine Drive, right now, we have a ten meter setback. Um, with the landscape plan that you guys have seen attached, I, I've read the comments as well about, you know, keeping good screening and keeping, you know, the naturalness of, of Marine Drive. Um, you know, the way that it is and, and definitely that's something that you guys can, you know, make me beef up, you know, if you would say, um, at the development permit stage, for sure.
Just to piggyback Counselor Kemp's comments there, I think, you know, when you're reading in the comments that we're all trying to um, to address, one of them is Marine Drive. Um, Counselor Hor is going to agree with me here, I um. I do like the current entrance to the lot.
Right.
I know it doesn't fit to your plan, but plans can also be changed, Nigel's on the phone here. Um, there's a lot of value on the current existing entrance as well as the natural vegetation. We use the word natural vegetation, you know, around here, whether it's shallow, eel grass, everything, when you tear something up, it takes a long time for it. Where, we don't live in Parksville and, and we like that and I think that the natural vegetation component, soon as a machine tears something up. And um, you know, the landscape. When you, when we put in artif, and I'll call it artificial landscape or put our landscape afterwards, it really takes away that, that natural element that was there, it's special, so. I, I know, I'm going to echo what Claire and I have spoken about this and um, and, and some of the people have made comments regarding. Uh, you know, keeping that natural vegetation look in the front and, and I kind of like the, the, the entrance that you have right now. And if there's a way to, to doctor that and I'll, I'll also say that if there's an opportunity when you, when Nigel were to reschedule or revisit this. Um, whether uh, you may not have thirty-three, you may only have thirty-one, thirty-two, knowing that. Changing that around a little bit may not get your, 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 your full allotment of units that you have right now and would that be a negative?
Well, I mean, I, I want to be a good neighbor and, you know, a, a nice developer to work with as well and, and, and yeah, I, I do think if we do need to rework. Um, you know, the entrance way and whatnot, and if we do end up losing a couple, a couple lots to make it, you know, more natural or keep, you know, keep with the naturalness of, of Marine Drive and whatnot. I'm, yeah, I'm very amenable to that, that's um, I mean, I think that, you know, today's biggest thing is, you know, this is land use, so we want to, we want to, we want to change this, you know, from. From what was, you know, allowed to something like this, you know, ground level, small lot, that kind of thing. So yeah, I mean, I definitely, you know, can rework and, and we have more studies to do at a development permit stage, which, you know, is, is, is hopefully coming. Uh, one of those is, you know, tree surveys as well, so um, yeah, we can definitely, you know, rework some things if needed be.
Is there anything else for you, Counselor Kamps, on that one?
Oh, not on that one, no. I can give someone else some time for a question.
Counselor Cole, you've been very quiet.
Uh, my colleagues here on council are asking the questions that I would have had, I'm kind of, I'm coming from a bigger picture approach. And I don't have any comments at this mo, or questions at this moment, I, I have comments.
Okay, um. I just, it's another one is that, you know, again, from uh, some of, some of the authors of some of the comments. Um, buffer is important, I know I've said it to you many times and it's important to just say this, you know, publicly as well as in front of the group here. Uh, just keeping that natural vegetation, but also there's a, there's a stigma with um, um. Modular homes, right, and we know that and um, you know, you've, you've decided, and I, I'm going to say it. Quite clearly, Mr. Greg and everybody said this, and that this thing's been on the books as affordable housing for seventeen years. And uh, no one up till before you coming here and, and I have said, and I've even said it to you, Andrew, it's like. There's been a lot of doors closed in your face here in order to, it would have been a lot easier for you just to kind of get up and, and go somewhere else, so I do appreciate that you're, you're kind of, um, you know, you are a developer and uh. And sometimes they get the stigma of it's just to make your money and to run and um. So that's that modular home component where it makes it very easy, but you know, that, that, that's, that, that unfinished basement adds another level of complexity. That you probably, uh, you know, six or eight months ago, when you were thinking about doing this, this is adding another level of complexity, but. You're committed to seeing that through, which, you know, I do appreciate, I always have. Um, you know, upon saying that, it's um. You know, I think that's where Counselor Cole is probably not saying that question, it's, sometimes it's, it's tough because warehouse or has a big chunk of land here and, and, and for all of us. That sometimes you're wondering, when, when, when is warehouse are going to step up and go, hey, we, we, we're selling lots in this community and. And uh, in the previous council from four terms ago, uh, you know, at that time, they made a decision. That uh, to allow Ocean West to continue on with lot thirteen being affordable housing. And no one to date has been able to try to make something work, so the modular home is something creative. And uh, but I'm going to start babbling the, it's like, it would, I would like to get your, your take on. If there was an opportunity to do a bit of stick frame in there and maybe your comments on that.
Yeah, no, absolutely, and um, sorry, we are definitely, the, the reason that I like. Modular is, is, is for all the reasons that I've obviously advertised, you know, that, you know, they're, they're more green efficient, they're, you know, more energy efficient, they, you know, they're built quicker. Um, you know, and obviously there's, there's a little bit of cost savings. I do think, you know, you know, hopefully this, you know, gets approved and as we move forward. Absolutely, we can stick frame some, if, if, if there, if there's local contractors or even, you know, if we can put it out to, you know, contractors that I know and whatnot that want to come and. And stick frame some houses, absolutely, I'm, 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 I'm very amenable to that. I do think, you know, there, there's going to be uh, either a cost to me or a cost to the end, end buyer of uh. If, you know, they're significantly more, but you know, we, we're going to try and design something that, you know, doesn't cost, you know, that much to build, so in turn, we don't have to go sell it for five hundred thousand dollars and keep them unaffordable. Um, the basements, yeah, absolutely, at, at a minimum, they're on a four-foot crawl space, that would only be if we're into some, you know, very severe rock. Um, but yeah, the majority for, for um, unfinished basements, you know, gives somebody the opportunity to grow into it, so. Yeah, no, that's, I do think we can, we can obviously stick build some, not a problem.
Counselor Kamps.
Um, Mr. McLean, I know you've, um, can you just talk to the audience a little bit about? Sorry? What?
Sorry, Mark was talking.
Well, um, about uh, some of the different costs regarding modular and stick-built and, and I, and um. If you've gotten any more quotes from any other modular companies regarding uh, and what the different costs are on that?
Yeah, no, I mean, definitely when we went to go um, with the idea of modular, of course, we looked at um, about four or five different uh, B C companies. Modular is, is, is kind of hip and in now in, in the construction world and. Um, yeah, they, they, they absolutely range from, you know, there's little boxes with, you know. Old metal siding and, you know, flat roofs for, for really cheap and then, you know, um, I think you even sent me a link on a company that was uh. You know, new to the game and, and, and everything, but there, you know, you can get a five hundred square foot modular for, you know, three hundred and fifty thousand nowadays if uh, if so that you choose, so. We've definitely looked at four or five, um, you know, and quoted out four or five different, different companies. The island, um, and especially Uclot, um, you know, some people, if they haven't done the drive and transfer of a, of a, of a home uh, here before. Um, some companies weren't willing to do that either. Which, and it, and, and not because of Kennedy Hill, mostly because of Cameron Lake, actually. So um, yeah, there, there, there's a component of looking at, at a lot of things now, as far as the design. Um, you know, we, that's not something we're locked into as, as cottages, that was something that we believed was, was very west coasty if. If so, design needs to change to more modern and, you know, you know, metal, metals in again and, you know, and cedar siding and, you know, shed roofs and things, that's something that we can absolutely do. Um, that we'll put forward at the development permit stage.
I have one more question, so this um, this brings it to this, um, so how can we guarantee? If there are cost overrides to this, and this must, might be a question for Mr. Greg. If there are cost overrides for this, how do we guarantee that this is still under the affordable housing and, and that's, that, that parameter?
So we have to stay within the um, the agreements, the affordable housing agreements that we sign with B C Housing for um, the homo, uh, A H O P program. And the rental has to, you guys at the last meeting gave a rental cap. On, on the unit, so um, their covenant is registered on title to make sure that they, they are affordable.
So that, so that stays in basically the, the, the housing agreement with the District of Uclot then?
Right, correct.
Uh, sorry, Counselor McKeown, I've been told I've missed you a couple of times.
Thank you, uh, through the mayor to Andrew, hi Andrew.
How are you?
The uh, the big thing for me is the visual separation from um, the development along Marine Drive. And um, I know there was a letter in our package from Black Rock suggesting that um, that was really important for them too. And so that uh, some sort of landscape and fence screening be um, be there even at the beginning of the project, is that? Is that possible, even with trucks going in and out?
Yeah, um, and you guys had voted on that uh, last meeting, that um, the, the landscape um, and fencing would be done before the uh, subdivision starts. So um, yeah, absolutely, um, and, and what we've proposed can always change too as well, so that was just, you know, something to get in, you know. That's normally at a, a development permit stage thing, so we'll um, yeah, we'll absolutely, we can beef that up and, and yes, it will be done before trucks start rolling in and out of there.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, I'm going to throw one more out there, um, if I don't see any. Did you have one, Counselor Cole? Go ahead.
No, go ahead, my questions have all been asked, I just want to talk when I, when everybody's got their intel.
Okay, I'll give, I'll give you three minutes, I'll try to keep it there, timey. Um, and obviously the one that I think for all, for myself and for all the council, it's in, for, even for the district, it's, 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 it's kind of um. Providing credits early, right, and I know that you're putting on basically a personal guarantee here to get this thing going, which I appreciate. Uh, again, it's um, I'm not privy, none of us are privy to the conversations, you know, between the lawyers and stuff, but. Um, you know, your commitment of trying to making sure this continues on, um. Warehouse did have a wonderful rep that used to come and see us, this fellow's name was Doug Cole and, and hopefully there's no Warehills or people watching because. He was a very gentle soul and, and, you know, and I know he was a guy that, you know, you could really count on and he's not there, so not having a representative. Before us here in the room or even on Zoom to be able to just understand this, you know, the, the uh, the sensitivity to this topic. Uh, this is a community over the last fifty years that have come and seen a lot of great projects and we've seen projects uh, just recently in front of the moorage. And I think that's what gets us nervous and the thought of um, the nervousness that you probably, you can appreciate of, of. Here's your credits and Mr. Greg, and I want to just appreciate your, your wonderful timeline and uh, of A, B and C in the subdivision stage. Of giving the credits, which would be the normal, which we all know that and you've been trying to um, provide. Some confidence and some, something that we're going to be able to kind of go back and um. Not going to backfire on us, and I know that, that's where, you, you know, where we're coming from, but um. And I, I keep going back to the fact of this vacant, this lot's been sitting empty a very long time and, and no way do I want to appear that. Um, we're desperate, but we are in it, you know, in a need because developers are not showing up. Uh, by the mitfolds to um, to this community and just, you know, again, to the audience that is listening. We've had a few developments as a, as close as twenty-two hundred feet from this community center of uh, of mixed use. Beside the police station across from the moorage, um, and they've come to the planning department and they haven't come to. They haven't passed it, you know, a lot of effort being put forward into it and uh, this council being supportive of it, so there is that just natural reservation of um. Wanting to make sure that. Because we're the ones that are going to eat it, no one else in this room other than the five of us of doing this and, and, and uh, because we are, and I know, I speak. That there's a lot of people in this community want to see this and, and they want to see it available to them. I want to see it available to them, I know people that are on your list, I've told you about some of those names and uh, it's desperately needed. And I, and, and in a time like we have right now, uh, with the world economy, um, I think it just only compounds uh, the need for that because I can't stress enough. Um, developments are not racing here, um, but um, so yeah, it's, it's the credit one, the number, number, number three there that um. You know, I'm supportive of it, but again, it's one of those, it's almost like one of these going the old school, giving someone the old handshake here.
Yeah.
And it's, and, and, and it's just a little bit of disappointment that Warehouses doesn't have a rep here to, to speak with their lens of this.
Right, and I, and, and I've been struggling with, how do I make, you know, somebody feel comfortable with giving these credits early and. And, and, and not to put a dollar figure on, on, on the gamble that I would take there, but you know, I would, you know, if I don't get it done in eighteen months, you know, your three, your guy's contribution of three hundred and twenty thousand dollars is gone. And then if I don't get it done in twenty-four months, then you own a piece of land on, on Marine Drive and, and, and. The combined is, is a significant um, dollar amount where. Really, you know, as, as far as assurances you go, that's really all I, that's my hand that I can play, so I, I, I do hope that, you know, you guys see that as, 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 as much goodwill as I can give. Um, you know, I, I, I do want to, you know, build something great um, in Uclot and, and, you know, even before I came here today, I met, you know, three buyers on site, social distance, of course. Um, and, and they're excited, you know, they're, they're renting and they're, they're, they're sharing a home with two other people and, and they can't wait for it, so. Um, and one was a renter and two were purchasers, so I, I know we can make this work, I, I think the, the big thing is, 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 I mean. I'm just going to put my money where my mouth is and that money is in credits and, you know, I, I hope it goes the way.
Counselor Cole.
Okay, I would like to start by thanking my fellow council colleagues for asking all the questions that we've all been thinking about. And I think we, we heard some great answers and I want to thank staff for all the work that goes into the presentation, so it is so. Easy for the audience and for us to comprehend some of these details that, that are difficult. Um, not in some of the formats that we've laid out before to, to understand. And I want to preface the rest of the things I say with that affordable housing is paramount to all of us. I think you'd have a hard time talking to any of this council and not realizing that it is in the, it's the top, it's, it's for sure in the top three. On everything we do all the time, it's, it's, we, we know we need this, it's not a want, it's a need and we all recognize that. Um, so not to speak for all of us and I want to thank Andrew because um, I, I know that. A lot goes into this and I know that you have a lot and, and I do want to thank you for your consideration of everything in Uclot and. And this was a lot easier to talk about a few months ago. Which is what brings me because I, I've read everything and I've, I've heard the input that. Under these circumstances, in the way that we've been given input, um. And not in, three things keep coming up to me that not in good conscience can I feel supportive. Um, after everything that we've talked about uh, today, the three things are the public hearing. The three things are the public hearing. I really think that the way that we, and I'm all about change, I truly am. And I understand we're in different times and things need to be done differently. But I feel the community is owed the opportunity to get input, get information, give opinions, and see things live and in person, and doing it under these lockdown circumstances. I feel as though we are putting ourselves at risk for not everybody understanding everything completely, not the way we do, because we've put a lot of effort into, everybody here has put a lot of effort into understanding this. But I don't believe that all of our public that could, under these circumstances, have that opportunity. And secondly, in these uncertain times, we didn't know five months ago we were going to be seen here like this. We didn't even know a couple of months ago we'd be seen here like this. So we have no idea because there is no precedent set. We have no idea how the forms of recovery are going to look, what that means economically, fiscally, what that means for, and this is global, this isn't just us. So I feel as though in these uncertain times, when no one saw this coming, it's like in 2008. There are a lot of developers went bankrupt. I mean, I'm not saying that, Andrew, and I certainly hope that that's not the case. And everybody knows me, those who know me, know me, I'm impatient. And I don't like to wait on things, and I'm go big or go home. And it's not like me to be overly cautious. But in these uncertain times, I think erring on the side of caution and waiting just a little bit, there's, I get that you have a timeline, unfortunately. My third thing is, I feel it's a bit high-handed by a very diversified, US-based, 120-year-old company that's worth $20 billion to tell us that they want credit for something that hasn't happened yet. I just morally have a problem with, and ethically. And if they're concerned, we probably should be concerned. I feel like there are things that perhaps maybe we just need to stop, step back, and wait till we can do it with knowing we have the full support of the people that we're supposed to be serving, and do it completely, not the old school way, because I get that things are going to be different, but in a way that is completely transparent, not virtual, not, you know, on computer screens. And that's kind of the gist of what I want to say. I would like to take some time. I support the concept. The NIMBY thing doesn't really fly with me because it's going to happen somewhere. There are many things I could say about the project itself. I do, I support it. I just think it needs to be done differently. And I know you're on a timeline. But the timeline is based on Warehouser, where I want to make the timeline based on this community. That's all.
Thank you for the comments. Yeah, and, I mean, we've been, we've been, you know, we've made our timeline, you know, known since day one. And, yeah, these are odd times. These are, I mean, you know, every municipality is doing, you know, their best to, you know, put things through or not, you know. And I think it's just one of those things where, you know, we put our best foot forward. And, yeah, you know, the public was able to, you know, write in and whatnot. And, you know, I've gotten lots of emails and lots of, you know, I think the people who wanted to be informed were, you know, and have been. Hopefully, you know, that's always the hope, so.
Okay. Are there any questions from any other counselors there? Counselor McEwen?
Thanks. Just a comment. I feel okay that we didn't hold a public hearing because at a public hearing, we're just there to listen. We can't answer people's questions. We're just to listen to input. And that's exactly what we've done with these 88 pieces of input. And I think that's more input than we normally get at a public hearing. So I'm okay with not having held a public hearing. And I was a little nervous about giving credit to Warehouser at this stage. But since the documents, the new documents arrived today in our late package, that does put my mind to rest. So I'm supportive.
Okay, thank you. And I think we're probably done with questions for you.
Perfect, thank you.
Mr. McLean. Thanks for your comments, Counselor McEwen. Any other comments before we go into these recommendations? These seven recommendations? Oh, Counselor Cole?
Sorry, I should have mentioned that there would have been opportunities to have a real open house, and not just to hear what they have to say, but to be able to display information for them in face-to-face and provide for Bruce, like we've done in the past, like we did with cannabis retail, et cetera, for, to actually have a personal conversation with someone with supporting documentation and visuals, et cetera. So aside from the, that there could have been that opportunity as well, which we don't have right now.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the counselors? Okay, we have seven recommendations, so we will start with, yeah, okay, great, thank you. Can you come up on the screen for us? Okay, everybody can see those. Does somebody want to start? Marilyn, she, oh, I can't hear her either.
Are you recognizing?
Oh, yeah, sorry, there you are. Sorry, no, there you are. Am I going to be able to see all the counselors? Okay.
Okay, I'll move recommendation one, that council gives third reading to UQlet zoning bylaw on, I should read from the screen, bylaw number 1269 2020.
Is there a seconder? I'll need a verbal seconder.
I'll second it.
Yeah. Okay. So any further discussion? So I'll call that to question. I'll have to go through them individually, or are you seeing them, Nicole? Okay, so, okay, well, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye for Counselor Hor.
Aye.
That's Kemp's.
Yep.
Aye.
McEwen. And Noel. Thank you. And opposed? Is there one I didn't hear? Counselor Cole?
Sorry, I'm opposed.
Yeah, thank you. And number two, oh, sorry, that is then carried. Number two?
Do you want me to keep going?
Yeah, why not?
Okay. I'll move recommendation two, that council authorize execution of the assignment of master development agreement by ACMC Holdings Limited and Warehouser Company Limited.
Is there a seconder? Please vocalize.
Second.
That's seconded by Counselor Kemp's. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? I got a counter, aye from who?
Aye.
Aye.
Marilyn, Kemp's, Hor. Okay, opposed?
Rochelle.
Okay, that's carried. Number three?
I'll move recommendation three, that council indicate that it is prepared to authorize modification of master development agreement and covenant EX125879 on lands owned by Warehouser Company Limited concurrent with the registration of the, in quotes, "no subdivision covenant with option to purchase" being registered on the title of Lot 13.
Seconder?
Second, Kemp's.
Any further discussion?
So this is the one about the credits, correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Giving the credits. Just clarify.
Thank you for that. Okay, we got a seconder. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
McEwen? Is McEwen the only one in favor? Okay, opposed?
Rochelle.
Hor.
Kemp's.
Okay, that one is defeated. The number five?
Four. I'll move recommendation four, that council authorize the discharge of no build covenant FB154873 from the title of Lot 13 concurrent with the registration of the no subdivision covenant with option to purchase on the property's title.
Is there a seconder?
I'll second.
Hor, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
McEwen?
Kemp's.
Kemp's.
Hor.
And Hor. Opposed?
Rochelle.
Cole, carried. Thank you.
And I'll move recommendation five, that council indicate that the offer for the municipality to contribute $320,000 to support the development of affordable housing on Lot 13 would remain valid until December 1st, 2021, subject to the developer obtaining all other necessary approvals.
Seconder?
Hor.
Hor, okay. Any further discussion? And, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
McEwen, Kemp's.
Hor.
And Hor, opposed?
Rochelle.
Cole, carried.
And I'll move recommendation six, that council adopt UQlet zoning bylaw amendment by law number 1269 2020.
Seconder?
Kemp's.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Kemp's.
Hor.
McEwen.
Opposed?
Rochelle.
And carried. And last one.
And I move recommendation seven, that council adopt UQlet housing agreement by law number 1270 2020.
Seconder?
I'll second.
Hor.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
McEwen? Is that Kemp's?
Yes.
And Hor?
Yep.
Okay, opposed?
Rochelle again.
Cole and carried. Thank you. Okay. Okay, do we need to take a little break, recess there before we get into the financial plan?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm looking for a seconder for just a 10-minute recess? Okay, all in favor? Opposed, carried. Thank you. Take a little recess. Everybody's here. Okay, perfect. Okay. 13.2, five-year financial plan and annual tax rates bylaw. Ms. Montith, welcome.
Good afternoon, through the mayor. Today, I'm here to get first and second readings of both the five-year financial plan and the annual tax rates bylaw. And as well, I wanted to highlight some of the changes that have been made to our budget since the meeting we had on March 12th, pre-COVID. So I just wanted to start with the budget changes. So, Nicole, if I could get the slideshow up for council?
Be just a minute.
Thank you. We can just go directly to slide two. I think the title is pretty self-explanatory. I can't see the screen without my glasses on. Okay, so slide two is just about the budget process again. And I know I keep repeating myself, but I just want to make sure in case there's different people tuning in today. The community charter does say that we need to have public consultation when it comes to budget processes. So I just wanted to reiterate that we began our budget sessions in December with an open meeting each month up until today. Recordings and all the slides are on our website. And COVID-19 has altered our public press process, just in the case that we can't have our regular in-person open house with the big display boards. However, we will have the open house slides on our website tomorrow morning. Those slides are more comprehensive than the ones that I'm showing you today. And everybody has from tomorrow, the 29th, until May the 7th, to write feedback to the email of community input at uqlet.ca. All the written feedback will be compiled and submitted to council for the May 12th regular council meeting. And we'll also be looking for a third reading and adoption. So council will be able to see all of the feedback. And just want to point this out, I think it's obvious, but I'll point it out anyway. Just keeping in mind that the open house slides show what's included in our five-year financial plan as of today compared to 2019, not compared to the March 12th budget. So if you're looking for where the reductions are, you're not going to see them on those slides. Because when we do the presentation, we're actually comparing the difference between 2019 and what we're actually going into with first and second reading. So, next slide, Nicole, please. The original total budget for the district in March was pushing $11 million. And the overall budget proposed today is $10,33,744, which is a reduction of 9% or $941,018. Having said that, the first cut we did was actually 20%. However, we've applied for a grant for the Anphrotrite House Project. The total amount of that project is estimated to be 1.2 million and completely funded by grants and RMI funds. So therefore, I've added actually that into the 2020, 2021, 2020 and 2021 plan. And this is how our projects tend to work sometimes. As grants become available, we reorganize our capital projects and move them around based on the year and based on what's available. move them around based on the year and based on what's available. Um, the, and the five year, the five years schedule A in detail is actually part of our financial plan bylaw, which is appendix A. So this is just a super quick summary of twenty twenty. Um, the next slide is our proposed changes, and we, we touched on a lot of this at the last meeting, but, uh, just to, just to firm it up, um, COVID nineteen is create created, sorry, created some significant impacts on revenues and cash flows. And revenues in rec- recreation, planning, water and sewer are expected. As well, we're proposing today a zero percent general municipal property tax increase, which we'll talk about on a later slide, and, uh, charging no fees for business licenses in twenty twenty. The reasoning behind this is to offer a break to our businesses and property owners across the board, rather than to attempt to single out certain groups or, or certain tax classes. And I felt that these two reductions benefited the most, the most citizens of, of the District of Euclid. Um, as mentioned at our last meeting, uh, we also still have limited resources, and we're not currently receiving financial support from the province or the feds, uh, in terms of operations. And this is still the case. The province is allowing municipalities to remit the police and school taxes, uh, at year end, um, rather than in July, but other than that, um, we are expected to collect taxes for ourselves and for those um, other authorities such as the A C R D, M F A, library and so forth. Pardon me. Uh, we have also proposed reductions in operations while keeping levels of service in mind. So some of the operational reductions up on the slide is, is that several of our new hires, um, including our new director of engineering, uh, positions have been postponed. Um, existing, some of the existing vacant positions that we have are also on hold. We have a couple of labor positions that are currently vacant. We're not doing any transfers to reserves to the, uh, fire department, planning and parks departments in twenty twenty. There is a spelling mistake. I see it. Facility closures and multiple reductions in recreation. So Nicole, if you could fix that spelling mistake for me, that would be great before it goes online tomorrow. Um, and we've had various reductions across all departments, and the management team has been very good at, um, uh, creating reductions in, in, uh, in their departments. We've also, we're looking at our capital and spec- uh, special project reductions that are tax funded. We don't have very many of them, but the ones that we do have that require some tax dollars, most of them have been moved, um, such as the, uh, cemetery upgrade that we had planned. Um, a lot of our lar- our larger bylaws that, that require outside consulting, that those have been moved to twenty twenty-one or farther on into the future, and some of the fire hall renovations. The renovations that we're doing at the fire hall have more to do with code and, and, uh, safety for the members at this point. So we've cut that back to eight thousand dollars a share. And then our capital projects, most of them are funded by other sources, grants, RMI, gas tax and, and the like. So we, we recognize that we're halfway through the year and we have a potential lack of capacity to get, um, a lot of these projects fully completed in twenty twenty-one, or sorry, twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. So we've split them. And a- again, we've added the Lighthouse Keepers House Project, um, depending on, uh, a grant funding for the next two, two years as well. Um, next slide. This is just, this is just our pie chart that shows what our total budget is, how we're, excuse me, where our money comes in and where how our dollars are spent. It just gives you, you can look at it on the website later if you like. It just kind of gives you a proportional balance between the two. Last year, our property taxes were thirty-six percent of our budget. And, uh, this year we're at thirty-one even with the, with the reduction in taxes. Sorry, next slide, Nicole. Okay, this is the one everybody wants to see. So zero percent general municipal property tax increase. This does not mean that when you receive your property tax notice that it will be the same as last year. What this means, what this means to us is that the district is not imposing any additional taxes on properties over and above what others are instructing us to charge. It also means the district is not charging extra taxes over and above what your taxes would have been this year if the assessed value has gone up more than the average. So essentially, we've adjusted our mill rates down to reflect an average market value assessment. So if you have a home that, where the average market value assessment is four hundred and forty-eight dollars, forty, sorry, four hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars, your assessment might go up forty cents. It's probably going to be zero. But if, if you have an assessment that's gone up more than the average, it might be a little higher. That's not something that we control. We, we can't control what the, what the value of your home is, but we're not adding to that this year. That's what that means to me. So I just want to make that clear because zero percent to some people might mean, oh, it's going to be the same as last year, and that, that's not what this means because there's, there's certain factors that we can't control. Um, we are keeping our, I am proposing, uh, still our January, or sorry, can't talk today, our July second due date. This is largely because the people that pay their mortgages monthly with their taxes to the banks, the banks are going to remit that money to us on the due date. So if we keep, if we keep the July second due date, it's about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for us, which is significant. And we still have a bunch of tax remittances that we have to make to the other authorities with the exception of the school and police tax, which has been moved to the end of the year. So this is going to assist us greatly with the cash flow. Um, however, the penalty dates I'm proposing, we move. So the province the other day proposed, or, or, well, actually they made, um, October first, the penalty date for classes four, five, six, seven and eight, which is essentially everybody except residential. I'm proposing that we do October first for everybody, for all classes. It makes it a lot easier for us to administrate here in the office, but it, I, I just think it's, it's fair. The people that have the money set aside, that can pay, um, that maybe have, this is their second home, or they've already retired. Um, their income maybe hasn't decreased because they're not in the working force. They're going to pay anyway, so we need that cash flow to keep coming in. But for those of, for those of people who are having, uh, maybe some difficulties, you need a couple extra months to pay, they'll still have until October first to pay, to pay their property taxes before receiving a penalty. So, um, we think that's, um, we think that's fair, given the conditions. And, um, Marilyn, but sorry, Counselor McEwen asked at the last meeting if our revised rule had come in, and it has. Um, it actually made a very nominal difference to our, to our assessment rule. It was only a few hundred dollars difference. Although the, the deadline for appeals is now, uh, June third thirtieth, so we, I suppose we could get another role, but I don't, I don't anticipate any ma- major changes. Um, so anybody have any questions before I go on to the bylaw report?
I can't see any, any of you, so if there is a question, just speak up.
Yes. Um, I just wanted to have this on record, Ms. Montith. So, um, just for the businesses that, um, the government has also reduced the school tax rates for commercial properties for the twenty twenty tax year. And have you heard anything about the rest of the tax rates? Have they been changed at all to now?
We, we've received all the information from all the other sources, and they're all, uh, increased. The only one that, the only ones that have gone down are the ones that you're referring to. So the, the school taxes for um, business and commercial has been reduced. So the people receiving those tax notices from us um, could very likely see a reduction, thank you, very likely, uh, see a reduction on their tax notices.
Okay.
Um, but it doesn't apply to residential, unfortunately.
Right. And in regards to the business licenses, I've been fielding a few calls because, of course, business businesses are coming due, and they're just, uh, wondering, so they still would have to submit the, uh, the same paperwork. It's just there's no cost to that, correct?
Yeah, I, I think what we're going to do, um, if we get a favorable response for first and second reading today, I believe what I'll do is I'll have a staff meeting later in the week, and we'll, we'll, um, formulate a plan just to send out the renewals. That, that should be easy enough so that people get updated business licenses at no cost. Any new business licenses that come in would still have to go through the regular process. We just wouldn't charge them a fee.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other additional questions? Hearing none. Okay, Ms. Montith.
Okay, sat here for two hours, didn't cough once, and now I don't have a voice anymore. Um, okay, we're just going to have a look at the staff report. I'm, I'm done with this slideshow. The staff report covers both, um, the five year financial plan and the tax rate bylaws. The, basically, the five year financial plan part of the, the report just goes on to say, you know, that one sixty-five of the community charter says that we have to do this annually by bylaw prior to the tax bylaw being adopted. Um, it also goes on to talk about, uh, a public process and, which we've, we've already addressed, but I've reiterated that in the staff report, uh, with the exact dates that we've met and how we, how we've met the public consultation um, part of the charter. And the tax rate bylaw is section one ninety-seven of the community charter, and essentially that says it has to be done after the financial plan, and it has to be done prior to May fifteenth. That date still has not changed, so we need, we do need to get this done. Um, the time requirements, again, May fifteenth is the magic date. And then I did put in a piece, uh, regarding COVID, and I'll, I'll just, uh, read it out loud. So this revised plan was designed to assist in supporting both residences and businesses in Euclid by providing no fee business licenses and a zero increase to general municipal property taxes in the twenty twenty year. As well, expected revenue losses and subsequent reductions in some services has been calculated. Prior year surpluses and reserves are intended to fund these losses. Should the need arise, the plan may be amended under one sixty-five. And that's really important to note. We don't know what's going to happen with COVID. This is our, our first initial, uh, major revision to the budget with the information that we know as of today. So if, if a couple more months or three or four months goes by and the situation doesn't get any better, council needs to know that, that the budget can be amended with a new bylaw. So this doesn't lock us in, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't mean that we have a license to spend the entire budget for the year. We're going to be very mindful every day of, of, of the money that we spend. And, uh, we're going to have to keep very close attention to our cash flow this year and, and just, uh, continuously monitor how COVID, it's very, this is one of those times that we just don't know how it, how it's going to roll out. So, but I'm, I'm cautiously optimistic. And so with that, if, if there's no questions, then we could go on to the readings if you like.
Okay, thank you for that. And thanks for the work that, uh, you've done over the last, uh, last six weeks on, uh, changing this around.
You're welcome.
Any other question, any questions from any of the counselors now that I can see you? Hearing, seeing, none. So we do have four recommendations. If someone could start that?
Want me to start that?
Sounds great. Thank you.
Move recommendation one that the District of Euclid twenty twenty to twenty twenty-four Financial Plan Bylaw number twelve seventy-four, twenty twenty be given first reading.
Second by Counselor Cole. Any further discussion? All in favor?
I.
Okay, opposed? Carried. Thank you.
Um, move recommendation two, the District of Euclid twenty twenty to twenty twenty-four Financial Plan Bylaw number twelve seventy-four, twenty twenty be given second reading.
Counselor Cole again. Any further discussion? Hearing, seeing, none. All in favor?
I.
Opposed? Carried. Thank you.
Remove recommendation three, that the District of Euclid Annual Tax Rates Bylaw number twelve seventy-five, twenty twenty be given first reading.
Counselor Hor. Any further discussion? All in favor?
I.
Opposed? Carried. Thank you.
Remove recommendation four, that the District of Euclid Annual Tax Rates Bylaw number twelve seventy-five, twenty twenty be given second reading.
Counselor Hor. Any further discussion? All in favor?
I.
Opposed? Carried. Thank you. Okay. Thank. Yeah, you did. Yeah, she did mention the open house. Pretty sure. I've written, written it down. Okay, um, thank you again, Ms. Montith, that, uh, late nights last four weeks redoing that, so we appreciate it. And we look forward to see the public input. Thirteen point three, fire safety inspection draft bylaw proposal. Mr. Geddes, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor. So today I've got in front of you a draft, uh, bylaw number one two six five, two thousand and twenty, uh, fire safety inspection, uh, proposal for, uh, here for, for second and third reading. And I gladly take any questions if anybody has any.
Does anybody have any questions, Mr., Counselor Cole?
Sorry, he said second and third, but we have here the recommendations, our first, second and third.
Through the mayor, at first, second and third reading today.
There's no questions. I think you're, you're timing it. At the end of the day, everybody's getting, oh, I need, I need to make a, um, make a motion to go past six thirty, looking for a second or? Counselor McEwen? All, any further discussion? All in favor? Post carried. Thank you. Sorry, Mr. Geddes. He almost met. He, he almost, we almost made it. Um.
I can make the motions.
Please, thank you.
Uh, that the District of Euclid Fire Safety Inspection Bylaw number one two six five, twenty twenty be given first reading?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you.
And that the District of Euclid Fire Safety Inspection Bylaw number twelve sixty-five, twenty twenty be given second reading?
Second.
Did you get that? And, uh, any further discussion? All in favor? Post carried. Thank you.
And that the District of Euclid Fire Safety Inspection Bylaw number twelve sixty-five, twenty twenty be given third reading?
Second.
Any further discussion? Um, in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you. Starting to short circuit there. We're going to save our questions for next time, Mr. Geddes, when, uh, we're, we're all clear-headed, okay? When the agenda's a bit thinner.
Sounds good. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
But just a quick question for you. I guess this is a, this is a standard thing that you're, that you're doing here. Um, and, uh, but yeah, I will save the questions for when he comes back before us, okay? Okay, um, any other business from any of the counselors? Okay, hearing none. Question period. Have there any been questions sent in? No questions been sent in? Uh, so we're adjourned. Thank you. Have a good evening, you guys.
You too.
Have a good night, everyone.